Let's just talk about cats. You have cats?
I have two, Lower and Biggie Smalls.
Biggie Smalls, I love that name.
Smalls, he knows his name.
I'm a rap fan, so I know Biggie Smalls, trust me. If you come by my house on Sillsby Road, you'll probably hear from time to time. I'm just letting you know that right now.
My best friend has a cat. He has white paws and his name, his full name is Lil Wheezy the White Glove Gangsta.
Oh, my goodness.
They just, they just call him, they just call him Lil Wheezy, yeah.
Wheezy know his name.
Yeah, he does.
That's great.
It's great. All right. We're all ready?
Yep.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Wednesday, September 9, 2020 meeting of the University Heights City Council or conducted by Zoom due to the COVID-19 pandemic under the rules set forth in the emergency orders allowing for online meetings. Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
This is Blankfield.
Here.
This is Berry.
Here.
This is Pardie.
Here.
This is Wise. Mr. Erdel.
Yeah.
Mr. Rock.
Here.
Mr. Goode.
Here.
Very good. All members are present. For, will all those who are able, please rise or otherwise recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we proceed to the approval of minutes, I want to take this opportunity to state for the record, a tragic event. On Thursday, September 3, 2020, Detective James Skirnivitz, badge number 2249 of the Cleveland Police Department, while assigned to the gang Impact Unit, was shot and killed while working an undercover operation. This loss has been felt deeply by law enforcement throughout the region, including our own University Heights Police Department. Last week, consistent with the order of Governor Dwyane, I ordered the flags at City Hall lowered to half staff. They will remain there until his funeral on September 11. I ask that would now hold a moment of silence in honor of Detective James Skirnivitz. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
By Mr. Erdel. Just for clarification on the record, which, which minute meetings, which, which minutes, meetings, minutes would these be? Kelly, we have minutes from the last regular meeting of, of June?
Nineteenth.
June 19th. Let's start there, June 19th.
Yeah, those are the only ones that they have so far.
These are the only ones we have so far. Okay, so the minutes of the last regular meeting of June 19th, 2020, motion by Councilman Erdel. Is there a second?
Second.
I didn't hear, was that Mrs. Wise?
Yes, second.
Oh, thank you. Second by Mrs. Wise. Any discussion or changes to these minutes? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
This is Blankfield.
Hi.
This is Berry.
Hi.
This is Pardie.
Hi.
Mrs. Wise.
Hi.
Mr. Erdel.
Hi.
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Goode.
Hi.
Very good. Motion carries. Next up on the agenda are comments from the audience. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Total time allowed is 15 minutes per meeting unless otherwise permitted by council ordinance 91-25. Is there anybody here who would care to address the city this evening? If so, please indicate that your interest and I'll ask you to state your name and address for the record and you will have up to five minutes to speak. I did see Meyer, I'm sorry, Kamchachi, I think is what I see. I may be saying that wrong, but why don't we start there? Sir, if you'd like to, to state your name and address for the record, you may have five minutes.
Yeah, my name is Mayor Kamchaji. I live on 2172 Vernon Road. Corner of Cedar. This morning, after, I called the police for noise coming from a delivery truck that delivered to Psycho, from Psycho, the company Psycho, delivering to the sauce, the corner of Cedar and Vernon. That was something like 5:20, a refrigeration semi was delivering to, to the, to that place, making a lot of noise wake me up. And this is not the first time. I already complained three times in the past week. And it's been going on for a long time. Mostly the noise coming up on the refrigeration that was left on and the truck were running all the time. And this is about 50 feet from my bedroom. Direct, and every morning for six, six times a week, every morning around 5, 5:20, 5:15, that truck appear and every time a different driver and they wake me up with the noise. It's been going on for a while. Today, the dispatcher sent an officer to talk to me. On the previous occasion, when the police officer comes, that complained, he told the truck driver to move and the truck driver stopped the delivery and move and then they return later on during the day to finish delivery. Today, the police officer carrying badge number 63, I didn't get his name, came to me and basically complaining that I'm, I'm at fault. The driver have the right to make delivery at 5 o'clock as he pleased. And the noise is something that I have to leave with since trucks make noise, according to him. The, and beside that, and we were standing there and talking and he tell me why I don't complain about the Dunkin' Donuts. They're making noise too. What they were, because he heard the noise. So, so if Dunkin' Donuts make noise, the truck driver can make noise too. So two wrong can make one right. I'm a little bit nervous about what I'm talking now because really I was really upset. Instead of trying to solve the situation to see what can be done, maybe the, I told the driver can come at 7 o'clock. It's normal hour. 5 o'clock is not normal hour. Can become 8 o'clock, it can park in the front of the, of the business and deliver from there to the front door. And I seen them doing that a couple of times, delivering with a semi in front of their sauce. And you think, no, the truck driver doing his job, he don't see any problem. And that really upset me, get that response from that officer that I really value the police department did not taking care of all those illegally parked car. But to get that response from him, that I'm suffering every morning waking up and, and will be at 5 o'clock when I could be sleeping. And he doesn't see any problem with that. And I want to hear from the police chief is if it's, if it's really, there's no ordinance, they're talking about noise. I mean, here, like, neither there is a noise. He said, for him, truck make noise. And that's okay. And beside that, that street was no truck through on both side, was a sign before they, about, I would say seven years ago, something like that. And the police officer at that time decided that they're to remove it to make it, to make it so they can drive through. And I don't see a reason why the, I don't have no problem with the sauce themselves. I don't have, business is business. They have to have delivery. I understand all that, but don't have to be at 5 o'clock in the morning. I don't, my problem is not with the sauce. I don't have no problem with the sauce. But the police officer should have at least tell the truck driver, you cannot come in that hour. You can, you cannot park and leave the refrigeration running and the truck running and he can, and they, he can do it in different time frame.
Thank you, Mr. Kamaji. Your, your five minutes is up. I let you go a little over.
Yeah, I'm sorry to say I forgot that. I would like to hear from the police chief. Is the input to what? And in one of the things, the, the police officer tell me, why don't you go talk to the driver? I told him, I, I have to go talk to the driver to, to that or there is a police duty to make sure that the, the ordinance are enforced.
I will have to look into what our ordinance is with respect to deliveries. I don't know if our chief of police or a law director have that information, you know, readily available. But, but this is the first I was aware that, 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 that deliveries were being made at the sauce during the 5:00 AM hour or that anyone was complaining about it. I certainly understand your, your predicament and, and how if there is a daily visit there with your bedroom windows.
Times a week.
Yes, yes, so.
Mayor, I'm prepared to, to speak a little bit on this matter.
Please, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Kamaji, I'm looking at our cat history now. I'm showing two related complaints in the past week or two, most recently on the 4th at the 5:40 in the morning. Without having specific knowledge of, of the incident, not being there, obviously. What I can say is there's, there's three ordinances on, in city ordinance that could apply. One is construction and maintenance restricted between 8 and 4:30 PM. Question is whether deliveries would apply to, to a maintenance function. Also, we have disturbing the peace, which involves clamors and/or noises that disturb the good order of the city. And we also have a necessary noise, which AC units are referenced, which could potentially apply here given a refrigeration is required on the truck. Now, again, without speaking firsthand knowledge on the incident, there could be city ordinance that could be utilized to help resolve or, or mitigate the situation. What I can promise you is tomorrow there will be follow-up on this from the administrative level to reach out to the sauce as well as their, the vendor that is providing deliveries at 5:40 in the morning to try to mediate the situation. And I can follow back up with you directly.
Okay, thank you. I, I tell you, if tomorrow morning they come at that time, I'll, I'll be calling the police. And I hope they respond differently.
Okay.
Good, very good. Mr. Kamachi, if, if you would do so, if you could email us your contact information, that would be helpful in facilitating getting back to you as well. If you, you have email, can you email it to us?
It's my last name at hotmail.com.
Okay, but what I'm asking is that you go ahead and, and, oh, okay, so at hotmail.com.
My last name is up here on my picture there. K A M C H A J I at hotmail.com.
Okay, okay, we can email you then instead. Okay, very good. That's fine. All right, super. If you feel free to email us your phone information as well, or we will email you. So either way, we'll, somebody will.
I will, I will, I will, I would like to send a written to, to, to you and to all the council member about really what's happening. Maybe now I'm a little bit too nervous to describe it, but I could have it written and just the, how things developed from,
Okay.
a couple of months ago.
Well, if you'd like to write that up, you may email us at info, I N F O, at universityheights.com.
Okay, info@universityheights.com, okay.
My assistant will then forward that on to the, the relevant departments. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, you allow me to speak a little bit over the five minutes.
Not at all.
Mayor, I was just doing a search online of our ordinances and I don't find anything that's particular to hours of delivery.
Last time, Officer Eisner gave me a written ordinance about the noise, no noise about it. So there is an ordinance about noise.
Well, there may be an ordinance there.
There isn't, maybe it's time I mean to have, since maybe before that was known.
The noise ordinances can apply. I'm just, I'm just adding to what Chief Rogers said, that I don't see anything that's more specific than the nuisance noise ordinance.
I mean, the officer saw that is the noise, I mean, he agreed to noise, but he just see that as, as taken, you know, something that they have to live with.
Okay. All right. Well, well, thank you, Mr. Kamaji, Mr. McConville for clarifying that.
I appreciate the opportunity.
I'll off with you this week regarding, regarding this incident.
Okay.
Okay, very good. We are still in the public forum section. I know, I do see there are a number of people here. Mr. Collier, you're here. So I see you raised your hand. So maybe, address for the record and you may have the floor for five minutes.
Okay. Play, play the Oscar music if I go over. My name is Ronald Collier. I live at 4446 Sillsby, University Heights. I have an issue with my next door neighbor's garage. Their garage abuts our backyard and they have not painted it. It hasn't been painted in a long time. You can literally tell, you literally go into my backyard and you can literally see that it's not been painted. And I guess they get notices from the city or the city comes by and they just don't do anything and they claim that they don't have any assistance or whatever. And it, it really makes our property look bad. You know, because it, it, it's like, we, we've repassed the, back 2017, 2018, we did an extensive inside outside of our house and it's just really, it really, sorry.
I, I've seen your house. It looks really good. I like your landscaping especially.
Yeah, that's me, my dad. Oh, no, but for all kidding aside, it's just the, the garage is the problem. And it's like, I don't know what to do. And we even fixed our garage, you know, back in 2017. And it's like, what, you know, I don't know what has been done about that house. Next door to me. I mean, they're nice people, but it's like, I don't know what can the city do to help them make their garage up to compliance?
Well, I'll, I'll take a stab at that. We do have an exterior maintenance program. Your section of the city is not the, this year, we are in a different section of the city when it comes to doing the exterior inspections. We could nevertheless have an inspector come take a look at this garage. There was, there, there exists anyway, a, an exterior maintenance grant program for people who had, have certain income issues, meet certain income requirements. That was not funded this year due to budget cuts related to the pandemic. We, I'm hopeful that we will put that back in place next year. If, if it turns out that your neighbor has an income issue and would qualify for assistance, that particular program would allow, it's a 90-10 match, 90%, up to 90% of a, of a project that via, that resolves an exterior code violation may be funded up to $2,500. So if it turned out that this is still a problem next year and that is in place and they qualify, they could potentially apply for that program. What we have been doing when the program was active was if we sent somebody an exterior violation, we provided information for the program. So in the event that they did qualify and want to seek that, that assistance, they, they, they could seek that out. And we, we have had people take advantage of that and we've helped people stay in their homes and, and fix violations where they might not have afforded to be able to do otherwise. So I think it's a good program. I think it's an important program and, and depending on your neighbor's situation, it could be of assistance to them. In the meantime, if they have not been, been, do you have the address of the, of the property? We could look that up, not tonight, but, but.
It is 4450 Sillsby.
4450 Sillsby, okay.
That's correct.
Well, I, I can check with our, with our housing inspectors tomorrow and see if, if, if there is anything pending with regard to that address and with regard to that issue in particular. And, and, and I can get back to you. Feel free to contact me if you haven't heard from me over the next couple of days.
I'll see you next week for the committee meeting. So I definitely will talk to you.
True. So if nothing else, we will talk next Wednesday.
Yes.
Very good. Very good. All right. Well, sorry to hear about the situation, Mr. Collier, but we will look into that. All right. Thank you. We are still in public forum. Is there anybody else who would care to address the city this evening? Looking to see if anybody has, I'm also looking on the raising your hand function, not seeing anything there. Okay. Not hearing from anyone else, not seeing anybody else also physically raise their hand. That is the case, then it would appear that this does conclude the, the, the public forum portion of the meeting for this evening. And that then takes us to reports and communications from the mayor. Well, due to the length of tonight's agenda, I will be delivering a full report of the summer's activities at our next regular meeting of July 21, 2020. But briefly though, I will report now on three items. The COVID-19 pandemic and the state of emergency continues. Today's numbers for the state of Ohio, 132,965 total cases, 4,324 deaths. Worldwide, 27,994, 782 cases, 906,898,000 deaths. In the United States of America, 6,547,454 cases, 195,153 deaths. The United States is 5% of the world's population, but nearly 22% of the reported deaths. Please wear your masks and follow all orders and recommendations of the state of Ohio and of the CDC. Second item, on Labor Day, Monday, September 7, we experienced 3.98 inches of rain, the third highest rainfall in one day since 1901 in Cleveland. The 3.98 inches was recorded at Hopkins Airport near Berea. University Heights residents report higher measurements here with some recording as much as 5.5 inches in their rain gauges. For comparison's sake, we had 5.64 inches of rain for the entire month of August, 3.01 inches of that fell on August 28. Given that the largest rainfall on record happened in 1901, that was before the city was founded. And that makes Monday's rainfall the second highest in the history of our city. Given that it was Labor Day, anyone who had problems with flooding nevertheless could contact the city for assistance. Many residents whose basements flooded did call the dispatch and police non-emergency line at 216-932-1800. In response, we brought in a service crew to visit every address reported and to check the city side of sanitary sewer line for any blockages. Folks who contacted me directly were also put on that list. Like to thank Service Director Jeff Corney and to the members of our service department as well, who came in on Labor Day to serve our community. I was out in the field on Labor Day looking at drains and catch basins and talking with residents about their experiences with the rain and with the flooding. We didn't begin to have the flooding scene on North Park and Shaker, where the lake overflowed into the road or on MLK Drive in University Circle, but the flooding we did have was very real and it was disruptive to our residents and is something we take seriously. Yesterday and today, our service department was out continuing to visit addresses of homes that experienced flooding, over 50 of which we are aware of. While the review of individual addresses is ongoing, in general, the flooding was due to this being a capacity issue. Four or more inches of rain falling in such a short time simply overwhelmed the sewer system. If on Labor Day, you experienced basement flooding due to the sewer backing up, or if you have not already done so, please contact the city at 216-932-7800 during regular business hours, so that we may check the city side of your sewer line for any blockages. More on this may be covered by our service director, Mr. Corney, our city engineer, Joe Chuni, in their reports this evening. My third item. Following the senseless murder of George Floyd at the hands of law enforcement officers in Minnesota, I took the mayor's pledge to have a public review of our use of force policy and to hear recommendations for possible revision and update. Councilwoman Sandra Berry and I set up a citizens committee for that review. And we have had weekly meetings every Wednesday since July 22. Tonight is the first Wednesday since mid-July that we will not have a meeting. We will meet one more time next Wednesday, September 16 at 6:00 PM. Representatives of the citizens committee will then make their report at the next council meeting of September 21, 2020. At this time, I thank Chief Dustin Rogers for his support of this sensitive initiative. Lieutenant Mark McCarter for his faithful participation in the process, as well as our city prosecutor and assistant law director, Stephanie Scalise, who's been present at the meetings. Most of all, I would like to thank our citizen committee members, Patty Carlisle, Ron Collier, Joshua Hunt, Crystal Pickus, Priscilla Tate, Adasia Blue, Neil Gould, Lea Lawson, Sherry Sax, Mike Sears, Vincent Stokes, Andrew Gatlin, Adrian Harden, Joe Holman, Sheila Huffman, Paul Miller, and Sean Weiss, for all their service throughout this process. It has just been mind blowing and awesome seeing our citizens take this matter so seriously and be so thoughtful in their deliberations. This concludes my report. Thank you. The first item on the agenda then is an added item. It's a motion to approve the planning commission's recommendation from August 7, 2020 for the approval of application from Taylor Raymond LLC, Mr. Steve Hom, 2115 South Taylor Road, for an easement allowing the encroachment onto Raymond Boulevard. Mr. McConville, you may have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hom went through both the planning commission process and the Board of Zoning Appeals process with respect to his site plan, his proposed site plan for the former KFC property at 2115 South Taylor. The planning commission approved his site plan contingent upon the granting of variances. The very, I believe there were, there was only one variance that was needed, which was a parking variance. But then there's also, there's also a need for an easement to allow for existing infrastructure on the site that encroaches over into the right of way. All of the approvals were made contingent upon a development agreement being negotiated and entered into by Mr. Hom and the city. We have successfully negotiated that development agreement. It's pretty simple. It requires Mr. Hom to develop the site in accordance with the site plan approved by the planning commission. And it includes a, a release of any claim to what was a disputed right of way and makes it clear in a document that will be recorded that the, the Paper Street, Raymond, adjacent to that site is right of way that's owned and controlled by the city. That was an issue because years before there was an ordinance that purported to vacate a portion of that right of way. But that ordinance was passed in connection with a land sale that was never consummated. So the parties had differing views over the ownership of the right of way and this development agreement allows the city to quiet title and establish in a recorded document its ownership interest. In addition, we've agreed upon a very small easement. It's a five foot easement that will allow Mr. Hom to access the right of way along a portion of the boundary, so that he can maintain his existing infrastructure, which consists of a grease trap and a transformer, I believe. That's really it. I would, the final documents have been circulated, but they have not yet been returned signed. So I would ask that council condition any approval on the city receiving final signed documents from Mr. Hom.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Mr. Chuni, I don't know if you had anything you needed to add to this. I know that you worked on preparing the easement with the applicants.
No, I have nothing to add. I did look at the easements and I approve them, recommend approval.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chuni.
I think, Mayor, I overlooked one thing that I should add, which is just to remind council that when this process started and Mr. Hom came into co-ownership of the property, the city was dealing with a number of issues on the property that included both environmental issues and code violations. The BZI, and I think the city administration generally found Mr. Hom to be both very cooperative and effective in dealing with remediating the environmental issues, getting Exxon, participating in conference calls with Exxon, and in correcting the code violations that were on site.
I would agree. The, the, the change of management, of the management and the change in the ownership group of the property ultimately led to a night and day difference as far as the level of engagement and action and the seriousness with which the, the newly constituted ownership group took with regard to the city's concerns, the outstanding concerns, working with Exxon and so on. There were things that, you know, we did as a city, that you did, Mr. McConville, that Mrs. Drucker, Mr. Grogan Myers, when he was still here, and, and, and others did to, to, to move this along, including this council for, for declaring this a nuisance back some time ago. But with Mr. Hom's leadership, things have, have the initiative that our city has taken to have something done there has, has prompted Mr. Hom to take this over, take this on and take this seriously. And for that, we should be, for that, I'm glad. And I think we should all be glad that, that, that things are turning around for this parcel. And it should hopefully be a useful use here in the city once, once again. There are any questions? We're happy to address them. Mr. Rock, it looks like you raised your hand.
Yes, and I'm sorry I couldn't make the planning commission meeting. I had another engagement that day. But I'm looking at the documents here from that packet. And I guess I'm just trying to figure out what the scope of this actually is. You're saying it's a five-foot easement, correct?
That's right.
And so, because it used to be there was a, there was a drive-through over there, or there was a, yeah, it was a drive-through. And that was on the city property.
That's correct. That's the right of way, correct.
And then that's been removed, but now the right of way, I'm sorry, the easement, the requesting is to access, you said, what, a transformer and a grease trap?
Correct.
And I'm looking at the drawing here. So there's really it's hard to tell what this is. Are you looking at the, the drawing from the packet? It's called Site Improvement Plan. S P two page, S P two.
I have the site plan in front of me.
Are they putting a new curb? Okay, I see there's an existing curb, a new concrete walk, but that's still on their parcel. But then there's this box, and I don't know what that box is down below within that five-foot easement. And then there's the existing transformer that looks like it's on their property, but I'm guessing there's, there's something around that. I don't know if that's a fence.
That, yeah, the transformer, that, yeah, I believe that's correct. Is that right, Joe, that there's a fence?
Yes, they're going to fence in that area.
Oh, that's a new fence, okay.
Those items are going to encroaching onto the old Raymond right of way. And they need to access them occasionally to service them. So they need that easement just onto our property to access.
They're going to access it from their property, but they have to go to step foot onto the city's property to access it.
That is correct.
That's correct. And, and the easement, the easement does not run the length of the property line, John. It only, it only covers the area where those items of infrastructure.
That's what the thirty-foot four dimension string is. So that's thirty-foot four by five is what they're asking for.
I think that's right.
Okay. And then on the aerial map, I'm looking at a map here. And I haven't been to the site in a little while, but there's this, it looks like this is a little building. I don't know if it was like a dumpster shack or they put their lawn equipment in there. It looks like a little shed. Is that still there?
I think that was a utility. I don't want to say outbuilding. That makes it some larger than it was. And if it's what I think it is, no, it's not. Mr. McCorney, do you happen to know? Looks like you're, yeah.
Yes, it's a water treatment facility to pretreat their water. And it was removed from the property. It's no longer there.
Okay, good. All right. So they're not going to need access to that then. And let me go back to this drawing here. Where is there a new dumpster going to be located? I guess that's what this. It's hard to tell. Is this, I don't have it in front of me. I thought it was the north property line, isn't it?
Yeah, I, I think that's right, Joe, that it's the north property line.
The north property line? Well, that's not in their drawing. I see. I don't see that in the drawing. I see two handicap spots and then along the north property line, there's seven parking spots and then a curb.
And then I, okay, so well, I, I think it, I think it's depicted on the northwest.
Northwest.
So it would be the western property line, but you see that I had my readers, I might be able to see this. I'm embarrassed to admit.
Okay. Unless this is what, by that old building, there's a shaded area in the parking. Perhaps it's going there, because it looks like they're going to put a that fence is along the property line. I just don't see it. I'm guessing it's where probably can't see on here. I'm going to go see that. I'm guessing it's the, oh shoot, I just lost it. There's a shaded area in the parking lot. I'm guessing that's where they're going to put it.
I need to bring this up.
Proposing to remove the parking up against the corner of Cedar and Taylor there, put a new grassy area. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's all going to be a new grassy area, correct. They're taking the pavement out.
They're taking the pavement out, right? Okay. Okay. That's clearer now, so thank you.
Very good. Was there anything further, Mr. Rock?
Yeah, so, so, John, it is that on S P two, it's that rectangular area on the western, on the northwestern portion of the site along the western edge. It says new trash and recycling enclosure. So it's right next to, you know, it, it, it borders on the city's property.
Yeah, okay. I got that now. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure they're not going to do another drive-through there. It looks like from the drawings, they don't have that intention. But from what I understand, you're going to have an agreement letter, because it's contingent on that development agreement, correct? So they can't ever do that.
They, they cannot. The plan that was submitted is the one you're looking at. There is no drive-through. And they are obligated to build in accordance with the plan.
Got it. Thank you.
Just to be clear, though, this, that does not mean that, that they could not at some point propose or make some kind of offer, depending on the situation, to somehow seek to acquire, to some degree, the use of city property as the KFC once did to have a drive-through. But the present paperwork has no mention of it and does not have that in it. So, so for the time being, there would not be one based upon what is currently before us.
Based on this site plan that we're looking at, right?
Right. So the city essentially remains in control with respect to that type of future use.
Right.
Do we know, do we know exactly what sort of development this is going to be?
No. No, there, there are some suppositions, but, but it's all speculation. So I'd rather not, you know, put it on the record at this point.
Sure, sure. I find it disappointing that we were unable to maintain control of this. It's the gateway to University Heights and, and here we are talking about something that's going to be developed and we don't know what it is. So just wanted to say that. Got it on my.
Well, I understand. But at the same time, Mr. Hom is motivated and has put money into the property. And, and I expect that it will come to fruition, that, that's, it will become something. It won't, you know, it has not been, there's not been an open business there since two thousand eight. And that's, you know, twelve years ago now. I don't think it's going to be twelve more years before we see a business there. Something will be coming in sooner rather than later.
I'm just concerned about what kind of business.
Is there a motion to approve the planning commission's recommendation from August seven, twenty twenty for the approval of application for Taylor Raymond LLC, Mr. Steve Hom, twenty-one fifteen South Taylor Road for an easement allowing the encroachment on Raymond Boulevard, contingent upon the entry of the, being circulated settlement agreement?
Also move, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Blankfeld. There's a motion by Mrs. Blankfeld. Is there a second? I'm sorry, Mrs. West, what was that?
Doesn't it have to be conditional per what the law director said?
I believe I couched that in a conditional. At least I intended to. Mr. McConville, is my motion sufficient or should have we refrained? Or my statement of the motion, Mrs. Blankfeld?
Yes, and just for the record, the motion is conditioned upon parties executing the development agreement.
So I'll start with that.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. West. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Purdy?
Yes.
Mrs. Weiss? Mr. Erdl?
No.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Goode?
Hi.
Very good. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item A, Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-four, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the city of South Euclid to share proportionate costs and engineering services associated with the road resurfacing project and declaring an emergency. Mr. Chuni, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is the resurfacing of Warrensville Center Road, the S, the Warrensville Center, Cedar Road, the asphalt sections of Cedar Road. So that's from basically Tay-Taylor Road to Fenwick and from Miramar to Green. The middle section of Cedar Road is all concrete and it's not going to be part of this project. This is a project sponsored by Nowaka. It is a approximately a one point nine million dollar project. Nowaka is paying eighty percent of that, or one point four million. The two cities then will be sharing the remainder of those costs, it's just under five hundred thousand dollars. We also have a Cuyahoga County grant of two hundred fifty thousand dollars to apply to this, to the city's share of that. So this agreement is between South Euclid, you know, they own, we own more than half, but it's like sixty forty split, but they have half the street in one part. And we have a hundred percent down there, Taylor. So this agreement is between the two cities to share those appropriate costs as stated. So I recommend approval.
You're very good. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Are there any questions for Mr. Chuni? Questions or comments about the project? And if not, is there a motion to adopt? On emergency?
So move, Mayor, on emergency.
Thank you, Mrs. Purdy. We have a motion to adopt on emergency by Mrs. Purdy. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Weiss. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll take two votes. The first is on the suspension of the rules. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Purdy?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdl?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Goode?
Hi.
Very good. And then on the main motion.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Purdy?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdl?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Goode?
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Next item is item B, Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-five, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county fiscal officer. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor, sir. You're muted, Dennis. Very.
Very. Good evening, everybody. This is follow-up to the tax budget that council approved in July. We filed that budget with the prospective tax rates with the county budget commission. We received back an approval that we were cleared to certify these tax rates. It needs to be filed with the county before September thirtieth, so this can be on first reading tonight. A couple of key points, the total rate of taxation on real property in the city will remain the same as in twenty twenty. These are the tax rates that will be in effect next year. The total mills requested the budget commission is thirteen point two mills. Those mills are assigned to two categories inside, which is unvoted millage and outside it, outside millage, which is voted levies. There is no proposed change, the outside millage being requested of the budget commission for next year. The inside millage will remain at four point zero five mills. What we're proposing is to change the distribution within those revenues that we receive from the county so that we can increase the mills directed to both safety forces pension funds. Currently, those are point three mills. Those will go up to point five. And then we'll have the change of reduction in the debt service fund from inside millage rates of one point three mills to zero point five mills. That in essence will give us more money being dedicated to the general fund. Be happy to answer any questions. Again, this was all discussed in the budget hearings in the spring and then viewed this information when we went over the tax budget that was approved by council in July. Happy to answer any questions if anybody has.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Just, just for clarification, you said that the deadline first reading. Just for clarification, you said that the deadline could be on first reading.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be down to the budget commission until September. We can approve it at the next meeting.
Okay, okay. Is there any reason? Wait, is it in substantial form? Is there any reason we'd be admitting it between the next meeting?
I didn't remember. You broke up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I was saying, is there any reason that we would want to wait? Is there a chance we'd be revising anything? I mean, I just, I didn't know. I guess when I was looking at the agenda, I didn't realize until you pointed it out that this was not something we were considering on emergency, and there are several items that are. So...
Yeah, it's a standard item. There is going to be no change on second reading.
Very good.
Just trying to follow protocol. If we don't need it to be under emergency, we wouldn't do it.
Fair enough. Okay, very good. Are there any questions then for Mr. Kennedy? Very good. Mrs. Thomas, could you mute the participant? Thank you. All right, is there? There's nothing further than seeing that this is first reading. We'll consider the first reading to be had, and we will then move on to Agenda Item C, which is Resolution 2020-36, levying tax year 2020, special assessments for the cost of constructing, maintaining, repairing, and cleaning of the sanitary sewer system within the city and declaring an emergency. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor. These are, the first resolution is one of three. These are an extension of the special assessments that were approved by council last year for tax year 2019. Those funds were collected, first half collections were remitted to us from the county in March. We will get second half collections prior before October 1st of this year. So this resolution for sewers sets the rates that are assessed per property. I'm going through all the, there's two more resolutions subsequent to this. I'm going through all the parcels, pretty much one by one, to make sure that all the parcels are appropriately accounted for. But again, there's no change to what was approved by council last year. And all the exemptions, exceptions, and other special circumstances that were in effect for this year will be carried into next year as well. This should be passed under emergency because we have to get it filed with the county by Monday.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Are there any questions for Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Rock, you have the floor.
Mayor, so with regard to the special assessment on the sewer, so let me just, let's piece this together. This is money coming in as a special assessment from each property in the city through your property tax that's going into the special assessment fund. It's not part of the general fund. And we would spend money from that fund for the maintenance of the sewers, correct? Can't use it for anything else, correct?
Correct. For sewers, there's two separate funds. There's a sewer maintenance fund, which is accounted for the one charge. The other charge goes into a sewer capital fund. But those are both special funds, and you're correct. You cannot use those monies for any other purpose other than the maintenance and sustenance of the sewer system or capital improvements to the sewer system.
Okay, so the money is there, is what we're saying. And I don't know what we had budgeted this year for sewer maintenance, but there's been complaints throughout the year, various streets of sewer issues. Specifically on Trainmore, there was a complaint about the grate over the sewer not being repaired. But it sounds like we have the funds to make the repair as part of the sewer maintenance fund. I'm not sure how that's all supposed to work. We use our service department for that. I know we're using for other things. There may be some, I don't know if it's overtime, but it sounds like that particular, the money for those wages would come from that sewer fund, correct? It's not going to come from the general fund.
Correct.
These projects can happen now, the repairs of the sewers that we have throughout the city that have the orange barrels over the grates right now.
I believe so. Yes, I know. I'm looking at some things with Mr. Corney and the mayor to identify some solutions there. They can either be contracted out or done internally, but I believe the bottom line, we do have sufficient funds to get the work done.
Okay. And that's what I wanted to hear, too, because with winter coming, the snowplows are going to be going down the street. You know, we may have to contract that out. I want to make sure that gets done. I know we have the money for it, sitting in a special assessment fund. So I'm just going to put my two cents in that these projects really need to be taken care of.
Very good. Yes, thank you, Mr. Rock. And I have been working with Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Corney. We do have a list of outstanding projects. They will all be done before winter. So for exactly those reasons. Are there any other questions, comments? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2020-36 on emergency?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Erdl. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Goode. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll take two votes, first on the emergency. Mrs. Thomas, or on the suspension of the rules. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Aye.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Perdee?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Goode?
Aye.
And on the main motion.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Aye.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Perdee?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Goode?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Resolution adopted. Next is Item D, Resolution 2020-37, levying tax year 2020, special assessments for the cost of street lighting within the city on all designated properties served by streetlights at the rate of 80 cents per frontage foot and declaring an emergency. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. This, again, is an annual assessment that council approves. It's 80 cents per frontage foot for tax year 2020. We collected in 2021. This hopefully will generate approximately $195,000 to $200,000 worth of funding, which pays for streetlights in the City of University Heights.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions for Mr. Kennedy? Seeing none, any comments? Is there a motion to adopt this resolution on emergency?
Motion on emergency.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Weiss and a second by Mr. Erdl. Any comments or any discussion on the motion? Seeing that we'll take two votes. First is on the suspension of the rules. Mrs. Thomas, will you call?
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Aye.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Perdee?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Goode?
Aye.
Okay, and then on the main motion.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Aye.
Mrs. Perdee?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Goode?
Aye.
Very good. Resolution passes and is adopted on emergency. Next is Item E, Resolution 2020-38, levying tax year 2020, special assessments for the cost of planting, maintaining, trimming, and removing shade trees at the rate of 70 cents per frontage foot and declaring an emergency. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor, again, sir.
Thank you again, Mayor. Once again, this is an annual assessment. There's no change in the rate that's being applied per frontage foot. It's 70 cents. We need to have these assessments filed with the county on Monday. And this will generate monies that allow for the service department to maintain, plant, and otherwise support operations related to trees within the city.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions for Mr. Kennedy, Mrs. Weiss?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Kennedy, do you know offhand how much is in the tree fund right now?
I do not, but by the end of the meeting, I can find that out and let you know.
Okay.
Report here.
Thank you. If you can maybe let us know before we vote on the contract.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
When, Mrs. Weiss, when you said the contract, is this for the authorization to go out to bid items O and P?
Yeah, I meant to go out to bid. Yeah.
Okay, very good. All right. Thank you. Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion to adopt Item E, Resolution 2020-38, on emergency?
So moved, Mayor, on emergency.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Perdee. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Second by Mrs. Blankfeld. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll. Oh, first of all, two votes. First one's speaking.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Aye.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Perdee?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Goode?
Aye.
Very good. Then on the main motion.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Aye.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Perdee?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Goode?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Resolution is adopted on emergency. Next is Item F, Ordinance 2020-39, levying special assessments for providing city services in the removal of nuisance conditions, lawn care, at various locations throughout the City of University Heights and declaring an emergency. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mayor. Mrs. Weiss, just to let you know, as of the end of August, there was a little under $488,000 in the shade tree fund in terms of fund balance.
Thank you so much.
And these assessments, which, again, get filed with the county, the county acts as our collection point for unpaid assessments that relate to fees and fines associated with having to address nuisance situations on properties within the city. I've attached a list of the properties that currently remain unpaid. We've made several attempts to contact these property owners and solicit them to either set up a payment plan or make payments in total. A lot of them, we did get satisfactory results from the ones that are listed in your packet are the ones that remain unpaid. And if they're not paid before Monday, I will file them with the county auditor.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Are there any questions for Mr. Kennedy? Are there any comments? If there are none, is there a motion to adopt Ordinance 2020-39 on emergency?
So moved.
A second.
A motion by Mr. Erdl, second by Mr. Rock. Is there any question on the motion? Seeing none, we'll take two votes. First is on the suspension of the rules. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Aye.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Perdee?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Goode?
Aye.
Very good. And on the main motion.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Aye.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Perdee?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Goode?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Motion carries. Before I read Item G, Mr. Kennedy, is there a different rate I should be reading with respect to this item?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. When I prepared all the documents and the proposed contract, what we were requesting council to do was to approve an extension for a year at a rate of $3.10 per MCF. That price was only good through last week if it was subject to change, which it was at the beginning of this week. I was notified by NOPEC that the price for the extension would go to $3.27 per MCF. I would still recommend that we approve that based on two points of interest. One, we get considerable funding through NOPEC for other projects that the city and the CIC do. If we would not have those gas contracts with NOPEC, there was a high probability we would not get those grants. And when I looked with the NOPEC rep on the apples-to-apples comparative sheet on Tuesday, we're still considerably, $3.27 is still considerably below. The average rate right now for small business on the commercial side is about $4. So we're still considerably under that. So I still think it's a good deal. Gas prices are very volatile right now. Just got caught a little pinch. Our current rate that we paid for the prior year was $2.91 per MCF. So you can see it went up a little bit just in the past two or three weeks. But I still think it's a good bargain for the city and would recommend approval. I would ask that we get approved on emergency so I can get this filed before the price changes tomorrow.
Okay, very good. I will go ahead then for procedural reasons and now read the agenda item with the amended price. So Item G, motion authorizing the mayor to extend and enter into contract for the city's natural gas contract with NOPEC for one year at the rate of $3.27 MCF. And we will incorporate Mr. Kennedy's remarks as his introductory remarks to this agenda item. Did you have anything further, Mr. Kennedy?
No, that's it, Mayor. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I said it's still, still think it's a good deal. NOPEC's have been a good partner all the way around for us. So we'd rather get it approved this evening so I can file it tomorrow morning.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions or comments? Mr. Goode, you have the floor.
Mr. Kennedy, could you please clarify something that you said in your emails to us regarding this issue, specifically regarding the ability of us to request an accommodation should the market lower the potential rate? What was, there was some indication that seemed to tell us that if the rate were to go down after we approved this, that we would be able to make application for that rate?
We can make application for that rate. It's subject to, like, rolling averages and a couple other issues, but it's considered to be a fixed rate until we would renegotiate the contract and perhaps extend it at some point during the first year or a second year at a different price. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Thank you, Mr. Goode. Any further questions or comments? If there are none, is there a motion to authorize the mayor to enter and extend the contract for the rate of $3.27 MCF with NOPEC?
So moved.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Erdl. There's a motion by Mr. Erdl. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weiss. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Aye.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Perdee?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Goode?
Hi.
Okay, just 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 before I move on, Mr. McConville, this is a point of order. I do recall now that Mr. Kennedy said something about passing this on emergency, but this is a motion and an ordinance. So I don't believe we had to do that, but I just wanted to double check that before we move on.
Correct.
So so Mr. Kennedy can go ahead and and we can go ahead and get this contract entered tomorrow. Very good. Okay, very good. Well, then the motion carries and thank you, Mr. McConville. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, and we will proceed accordingly. All right. Next item is item H ordinance 2020 dash 40, amending the authorized permanent appropriations for current and other expenditures of the city of University Heights, Ohio, for the period commencing January 1, 2020 and ending December 31, 2020 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Kennedy.
I think you're going, Mayor. This is just a general catch-up appropriation ordinance for the middle of the year. There's a number of items that that we are requesting changes to. I'll briefly run through those. Right now, there's some small internal changes to the general fund. We're adding $2,500 for the appropriation for Shaker Court expenses, adding $22,000 for prisoner housing expenses that's paid to the city of Solon. We're decreasing the salary appropriation for the billing departments offset that. So the total of $24,500 is being added to those two specific costers will be offset by the reduction of billing departments. So there's billing departments. So there's a net effect of zero on the general fund.
So it's a wash?
Yes, complete wash.
Okay.
For the sewer maintenance fund, we in August, literally on the last day of August, we received a check from the Cleveland Water Department, $298,360.30 with the project that was previously approved on Laurelhurst Road. I believe that's a Fabrizi construction project. The city had owed the Cleveland Water Department $110,071.85 as a result of a final reconciliation of project from 2018, 2019 for Groveland Washington water mains. I did put a placeholder in the appropriations at the beginning of the year for $255,000 based on some discussions with Mr. Chuni. So I'm making a request here to adjust the appropriations in the sewer water maintenance fund by 153,500 to allow for encumbering for all the project expenses for Laurelhurst and to give us the fund balance to pay the Cleveland Water Department the amount that was the reason that we owe them as a result of the final reconciliation. And I'm sure that Mr. Chuni can give you any kind of details on that. Once we're done with this, I'm also requesting to approve an appropriation increase of $34,000 in 2020 to cover all the projected street lighting expense through the end of this year. Those assessments that were approved last year by council and that we renewed for next year, as I said, we'll be getting those by the end of the month. So that'll give us the necessary fund balance to support the increase in appropriations. What I'm trying to do is get all the 2020 expenses paid for with 2020 money as opposed to do what the city has done traditionally in the past, which is basically to stop paying bills in November and December and then paying prior year expense out of current year budget. So I want to tie everything up this year. The fire pension fund, we need an increase there in $11,200 to support charges that we expect to be posted against that fund prior to the end of this year. Again, we'll be getting second half settlement monies for the fire pension fund before the end of the month. So that'll give us the fund balance to support that appropriation. We also established when council approved the acceptance of the CARES Act funding, we set up a separate fund. It's Fund 297, which is titled the Local Coronavirus Relief Fund. We have received $465,644 in federal funding for CARES thus far. We're on track to get an additional assessment of monies that'll be distributed by Kiowa County. So what I'm looking to do here is to set up an appropriation, $350,000 in that fund. That's split between $75,000 of estimated salary expense, $275,000 in other expenses. What I can do then is charge off the items that previously have hit either the general fund or some special revenue funds, but they were direct COVID-related expense, and we'll move those expenses against the new coronavirus relief fund. That'll then restore those appropriation and and fund balance levels in the general fund, which will improve our position a little bit. And we're still waiting to been working with Luke and some of his folks. We hope to get finalized a directive to to give us some kind of guidance on what charges are going to be allowed to be offset in that fund that were previously accounted for in either the general fund or another special revenue fund. And lastly, looking to improve, to increase the capital improvement fund appropriations by $211,390. In 2019, there were two shared projects with the city of Cleveland Heights, one managed by University Heights, the other by Cleveland Heights. The net difference of that projects that that we owed Cleveland Heights was $104,000 roughly. That was approved by council to be paid to Cleveland Heights in April. After discussing how the accounting went with the way it was managed in 2019, discussed the accounting with the auditors, I'm recommending that we book the projects as gross. So we would record the gross cost of the project in the capital fund, offset that by the revenue that was paid us by Cleveland Heights. So in order to do that, I would need to increase the appropriations for a book entry by $2,000, $203,161. As I said, we did record the net revenue of $99,150 to the capital improvement fund. In addition to that project allocation and going back with the auditors from 2019, there's $8,229 prior year expenses that were charged incorrectly at some point during the year in 2019. So I'm going to need to make a budget adjustment for that, 8229 in 2020 to bring that up to speed. So those are the individual components that are included on attachment A. The net appropriation increase for all funds is $760,090, which is supported by the additional cash we receive from both the CARES distributions and Cleveland Water. That total was a little over $764,000. I sent the information on to Mrs. Weiss in August and discussed some of the need for that. So be happy to answer any questions anybody has related to these adjustments.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Are there any questions? Mr. Rock?
Yes, Mayor. Um, Mr. Kennedy, do you remember offhand what what are we down right now in terms of rate of collection for the year from last year at this time?
We're down from last year approximately $300,000 right now, but we're also down the expected growth that we had projected for the year. So it's about $550,000 total. But strictly for the year, it's about 300.
Is what we're down from at this point last year?
Right.
And we're potentially going to be bringing in 700, what was it, 760 in CARES money?
And the money from the Cleveland Water Department.
Oh, yeah. Okay, okay. That's all I needed to know. Thanks.
And when do you expect to get some guidance on the use of those funds?
Um, I've been working with Mr. McConville and associate in his firm. We've taken all the guidance that's been disseminated from the Treasury, the Federal Treasury Department, and anything we've received from the state county or state auditors. So we we hope to identify some parameters on how we can use those monies probably within the next week or so. The real issue is what we can charge off in terms of salary expenses. I think some of the hard charges that we've incurred to date for materials and supplies, building or facility improvements that were necessary because of COVID, those are all pretty much cut and dry. But the the area that I need the assistance from in terms of interpretation will probably be available from Luke sometime in the next week or so.
Yeah, I anticipate it'll be a little sooner than that, Dennis. We are working through a draft opinion. And I think we will have it out, if not by the end of the week, then the beginning of next week at the latest.
I think we'd all appreciate being updated on that. That's a big one. Appreciate your work on that.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Rock, did you have anything further? Okay, very good. Any other questions for Mr. Kennedy? There are none. Is there a is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2020 dash 41 on emergency?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to adopt that ordinance on emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. Motion to adopt on emergency by Mr. Rock. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Looking by Mrs. Blankfeld. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we'll take two votes. Take the, will you take the role on the for on the suspension of the rules?
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Perdi?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdl?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Goode?
Hi.
Very good. And on the main motion.
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Perdi?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss? Mr. Erdl?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Goode?
Hi.
Very good. Ordinance 2020 dash 41 is done. Next is item J ordinance 2020 dash 42, advance of funds from the ODNR Fund 242 to the General Fund 100 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an advance back from Fond 242, Ohio Department of Natural Resource Fund, which was used as part of the Park Improvement Fund. There was originally monies advanced from the general fund to get the project going. So those monies are due back to the general fund. We had budgeted $40,000 to be advanced back this year. That was noted in in ordinance approving those advances in prior years that I came across. I still have a remaining amount of about $27,000, $28,000, which was originally advanced from the general fund. So hopefully by the end of the year and based on the outcome of the 19 audit and what the auditors have determined, I'll be able to come back to council prior to year end and move the balance of that money back into the general fund. So as for right now, I'm just proposing to advance $40,000 back from the ODNR fund to the general fund.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions for Mr. Kennedy on this ordinance? Mr. Eric, excuse me, Mrs. Weiss.
You know, it's more a comment. I mean, I've been on council for almost six years and probably sat on meetings before before that. And we have never had such a impressive finance director that has, you know, interpreted information like this and and related over appropriately. And I just want to commend the finance director.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss.
Thank you.
Hardly agree. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments at this time? Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2020 dash 42 on emergency?
So moved.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Erdl. We have a motion by Mr. Erdl to adopt 2020 42 on emergency. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If there are.
I don't know if this is a discussion point, but did we skip 41?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think.
Yeah.
We had 41 after this.
I guess we could vote this and then.
I did. I did go out of order. I.
And then return to 41.
I'm sorry, Mr.
We can vote this and then return to 41.
Okay, very good. You know what? I was writing notes in the margin and somehow I, okay, thank you, Mrs. Weiss for bringing it in. Okay.
It was a law director, not me.
Oh, okay. Very good. Well, thank you, Mr. McConville. All right. Well, then, item J is before us. We will get back to item H or item I, excuse me, shortly. We do have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, we'll take two votes. Mrs. Thomas, will you take the role on the suspension of the rule?
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Perdi?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdl?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Goode?
Hi.
Very good. And on the main motion.
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Perdi?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdl?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Goode?
Hi.
Okay, very good. Ordinance passed. We now will now address item I ordinance 2020 dash 41, authorizing the transfer of funds from the General Fund 100 to the Payroll Stabilization Fund 299 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mayor. At the beginning of the year, we set up a new fund to protect the city over the course of the next 11 years. As everybody knows, we had considerable discussion about the fact that this was the year where an extra or 27th pay would hit. And I have proposed setting up annual transfers to this fund, which is permitted by state law to support thing of that expense so that 11 years from now, you could just record that last payroll against this fund. It won't impact your general fund. It won't impact the budgeting process. We won't have to make accommodations as we had to this year because we did not have that money set aside. So this is an initial transfer amount of roughly $13,000. That was a small amount that we put in the budget. Talked to Mrs. Weiss and she said to go ahead and put it on. Just so council knows, probably in future years, the transfer will be more along the lines of $40,000 per year. But this will at least get some money in that fund. It's a special revenue fund, can't be spent for any other purpose. So this is just basically setting this money in escrow or in separate deposit to protect the city and to give it the funding to pay that extra payroll in the future.
Hey, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Elected officials, different groups, thanking us for our actions this evening. 11 years from now. Any questions for Mr. Kennedy?
No, just to echo what Mrs. Weiss said, and we've all said at one point or another, Mr. Kennedy, your your forward thinking is always greatly appreciated. Things like this will make things so much easier at at points in time when coming up with that enormous payroll amount at the end of the year would be a burden for for our future administration. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Blankfield. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to adopt on emergency?
I'll make the motion on emergency.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Party. We have a motion to adopt 2020 dash 41 on emergency by Mrs. Party. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Blankfield. Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we'll take two votes. First is on the suspension of the rules. Will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Perdi?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss? Mr. Erdl?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Goode?
Hi.
And on the main motion. And on the main motion.
This is Blankfield.
Hi.
This is Berry.
Hi.
This is Pardie.
Hi.
This is Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Erdel.
Hi.
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Gould.
Hi.
Very good. Motion carries. Ordinance is adopted. And next is item K. Ordinance 2020-43, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for the transfer and disposal of solid waste services and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mayor. For many years, the city of University Heights has contracted with, or participated with Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District on their East Side Support Consortium for the transfer and disposal of solid waste and recyclables. This first ordinance has to do with our solid waste portion of that. The East Side Consortium went out for bids on June 26th of 2020 and received four bids from Kimball Republic, Rumkey and Waste Management. The results of that bid were a little mixed because they separated the solid waste from their cycling, the recycling in two different methods, blue bags or not blue bags, and the solid waste either done with recycling with the same firm or separated with one company doing the recycling, one company doing the solid waste. For the city of University Heights, the end result of that process was to separate, have the solid waste disposal and landfilling done by one company, which would be BFI, which is the lowest and best bidder for that process, and then the recycling done by Kimball. Currently, our contract expires at the end of this month, the 30th. So we have to make, make a decision on this. It had gone to our Service and Utilities Committee on Monday, August 17th for review of these bids and some discussion about what we should do with recycling and other things in the future. The outcome of that process has been to recommend award to BFI, Browning Ferris Industries of Ohio for disposal of our solid waste and transfer of that solid waste to a landfill. And that is my recommendation that we accept this ordinance and authorize the mayor to enter, enter into a contract with BFI.
Okay.
If I could interject with, with council, we've had quite a bit of a negotiation of this agreement back and forth between myself and their legal counsel. And there is one additional paragraph that we've gone back and forth on, on several occasions and they just gave, gave us a version back today that adds one paragraph that's been the subject of negotiation. I just want to read it into the record and talk about it briefly. It's titled Title to Waste, and it reads, "Contractor shall acquire title to solid waste when delivered to the disposal facility. Title to and liability for any unacceptable waste shall at no time pass to contractor, but shall remain with the generator of the unacceptable waste." There's, I guess, two noteworthy points there. One is they're reserving the right to bring something back to us that they picked up before they delivered it to the disposal facility. And then the second is that, that they are indicating that they will not accept title to any unacceptable waste, which is a defined term, and essentially includes hazardous chemicals, flammable, radioactive materials and other types of materials that are governed by environmental laws in terms of their disposal. And we finally settled on this language because I did not want anything in the contract to indicate that the city was acknowledging ever having title to and unacceptable waste. So, you know, in, in talking with Mr. Pecorni, we don't really know when we pick trash up in people's backyards, what they're putting in their, in their trash bags. I mean, you know, we, we take the bags and we deliver them. We don't examine the bags or their contents. So we can never really be exactly sure what's in there, but I did want to make it apparent that there was not ever any acknowledgement that we, the city, were accepting title to unacceptable waste. And that's the back and forth that occurred with respect to that provision.
So, Mr. McConville, this is common enough occurrence for them that they felt this was necessary language in the contract?
Yeah, well, you know, this is truly a lawyer's issue, I think. You know, when I talked to Mr. Pecorni about it and, and asked him, how often has this come up? The response was, well, it doesn't, you know, this, we've not dealt with this issue before, so.
But it may be with other communities and therefore they're doing it more broadly?
Well, they have legal counsel who's, who's trying to protect their interests and I understand that. They're in the same position we are. They don't know exactly what it is that's in the.
Right.
Trash bags that are, that they're picking up and delivering, so.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Mrs. Weiss, it looks like you were raising your hand.
Yeah, thank you. I just a question for the law director. I just wanted to make sure that nothing else changed in the contract since I read it. Specifically that there's a clause, since we have a series of service committee meetings coming up regarding a garbage study, that if we needed to cancel the contract, we give, you know, we can give notice and that's fine.
That's correct. That remains in the contract. That was one of our comments added to the original draft. That remains in the contract.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Any other questions?
Mr. McConville?
Yes, Mr. Gould, go ahead.
What is the procedure that's set forth about identification of the unacceptable waste? The period of time for detection once delivered to the transfer site? And the, the method to identify that it's ours? So it's, it seems like they're allowing a period of time where we would drop off our trash there and then later on they would say, oh, by the way, we found this. And then say that it came from us. Is, is that what I'm understanding from this addition?
Well, no, I, I think that once they've delivered it, once they've delivered it to the disposal site, they've acknowledged title.
And is that in the section that you've amended?
Correct. So, yeah, so once they've delivered it, it's, it's done. It's over with. It would be in transit that they would have this realization.
In transit from where?
Well, from, from the city to the disposal site.
But aren't we transporting it from the city to the disposal site?
We are.
So I guess, Mr. Pecorni, I, I, maybe this goes down to the practicality that was highlighted by Mr. McConville, but there's a box of C4 that somebody decides to dispose of with their trash and that gets brought down by, in, in a, you know, black trash bag from University Heights to the transfer center. At what point are they identifying this as unacceptable waste and returning it to us?
They would have to identify it once we open the back of our truck and push that waste out onto their, their floor, where they then load it into other semi trucks for transport to their landfill facility. So they would have to identify it in that short period of transferring between the time we dump our truck and we leave.
Yeah, and I, and there's, and there's nothing in the contract that indicates that we have to take it back. And, and that's what changed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do admit, and you know, Mr. Gould's point, the, the, the interesting thing here is, 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 you know, what will they actually do to, to examine what we are bringing? And what would be their procedure for rejecting it? And, and perhaps it's not our problem unless they find something they want to reject. Yeah, and then it is our problem, but I think it's our problem from the moment we picked it up, you know. So the bag of plutonium that the guys have picked up that, that is rejected, we'll have to work a solution to that. Hazardous chemicals, I mean, you know, yes, it could happen. Someone, you know, C4 is, as Mr. Gould indicated. And, and it could be discovered and then we would, you know, prior to their acceptance, and then we would have to figure out what to do with it. Once they've accepted it, they're, they're saying they don't have title to it and that's fine, but there's nothing in here that allows them to give it back to us.
So that, that's been changed in the contract?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, all right. Sure. Are there any further questions about this item? Not. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-43 on emergency?
I'll move, Mayor.
Very good. We have a motion. We have a motion by Mr. Rock to adopt an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Pardie. Second by Mrs. Pardie. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll on the suspension of the rules.
This is Blankfield.
Hi.
This is Berry.
Hi.
This is Pardie.
Hi.
This is Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Erdel.
Hi.
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Gould.
Hi.
Very good. And then on the main motion.
This is Blankfield.
Hi.
This is Berry.
Hi.
Mrs. Pardie.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Erdel.
Hi.
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Gould.
Hi.
Very good. Motion carries. The ordinance is adopted. Before I proceed, I, I want to apologize for my distraction here this, the, the last couple of moments. You may have noticed that, that Chief Perko has not been with us on, on the Zoom call this evening. Reason for that is, is that University Heights Fire Crews are battling a house fire in Cleveland Heights along with Shake and South Euclid Fire Crews. It's in the area of Lee Road near the library and I did just hear from Chief Perko that he will be able to join us. It sounds like he'll be able to join us in time for his items coming up in the meeting, but our thoughts certainly go out to the folks affected by that fire. All right, very good. Next is item M. Item L was withdrawn because a motion was not needed given the passage of an ordinance. Next is item M, ordinance 2020-44, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for recycling processing services between University Heights and Kimball Company and declaring an emergency. Mr. Pecorni, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you again, Mayor. This again is an item that was bid through the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District as part of the East Side Consortium. And it's for the transfer and processing of recycled materials. The agreement that we had previously expires at the end of this month on the 30th. And the bids were taken June 26th by the consortium. And the lowest bidder for bagged, blue bag recycling was Kimball. And I'm recommending that we authorize the mayor to enter into agreement with Kimball for processing our recycled materials.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Is there any discussion on this matter, Mrs. Weiss?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And so I just want to reiterate, but on the record, what I stated in the committee meeting. This, this agreement is actually going to cost the city money. It's going to cost about $16,000. This is coming at a time where the city is in pretty dire budget constraints at this point, not just for 2020, but going into 2021. $16,000 is a vehicle. $16,000 is somebody's benefits. It could even be a part-time employee. And I am not for paying for recycling. When you don't have a demand, that means, you know, the, the demand is gonna, the demand is low right now. And it's going to bottom out at a certain point and then demand's going to come back up. I mean, that's just how economics works. I'm also concerned, as has been highlighted in the city of Cleveland, is the recycling actually going to be recycled? This is not just an issue for the city of Cleveland, but for other cities, you know, as well. And until that gets cleared up, that's another reason. I'm not the main reason, but another reason why I, I am not for this. And this can always be started up when recycling numbers come back up and we can start, you know, not having to pay. I'm fine even if it were break even, but to actually pay for this, especially in the crisis that we're, that we're in right now, I, I will not be voting for this.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Mr. Gould.
I, I would like to, to echo Vice Mayor Weiss's sentiments. I'm deeply concerned about the expenditures for the continuation of the recycling program in its current form, which is why I endeavored to find a middle ground between ending all recycling in University Heights and continuing at this very high rate. As Sir Pecorni highlighted, the city pays a premium for continuing to do its recycling in blue bags. But really, there's not a mechanism right now for curbside recycling that's loose. And there was a middle ground opportunity, which would have allowed our citizens to bring their recycled goods to the service center in loose form, which would have resulted in us paying a lower rate. I understand the concerns of my colleagues that that may have lowered the rates of recycling to in some respect. But I think that those who felt strongly about continuing recycling would at least have been given an option that way without costing the city as much money. I also went back to the draft recycling study, recycled goods study that we had. And I had the opportunity to review the amounts of that we have for the individuals in our service department who are conducting the trash pickup and recycling pickup. And so I also wanted to highlight an additional cost savings looking at the amount that we currently have or use for these, these products, one of the, or for these services. One of the things that I asked in one of our draft reports was to break out the manpower that's used to do the recycling versus the rubbish collection. And, and that's demonstrated here in the middle column, 2018. So doing away with the curbside recycling had the potential money from bags, but also one full-time service employee position who could be allocated elsewhere. So I shared that to the screen. This is question five. And, and from the draft report that we sent out to the service committee. And so I, I, I too will not be supporting this option because I think that it's fiscally irresponsible. And I was disappointed at the position that my colleagues took regarding this at the service committee meeting. And so I had to examine for myself. You know, I have this view that we can't keep spending like this in. that we can't keep spending like this in University Heights. We can't have everything we want. And if I'm asking my colleagues to, to make a very tough decision around recycling and they're unwilling to do that, then I need to focus inward on my own views at the things that I want and want to spend money on. And, and for me, one of those things has been backyard trash pickup. I want to maintain that program, it's a very expensive program. And that's why after our service committee meeting with the anticipation that my colleagues were going to continue this spending on recycling, I asked the mayor to endeavor to find options to end backyard recycling, or excuse me, backyard trash pickup, which may allow individuals who want to maintain that ability to pay for that on a monthly basis if they don't qualify otherwise for ADA pickup. Because I think that we're going to have to make difficult decisions in the city regarding the services that we have and the expenditures that we're making. And I'll state publicly that although I'm not excited about the potential of ending backyard trash pickups that we can continue programs that are otherwise potentially eliminaable, or have the potential to be eliminated, but are expensive, that I, I am willing to compromise and I am willing to find solutions that will save our citizens money and hopefully give citizens who want to maintain those options, those, those services, the option to do so. So thank you so much for listening to me and my position on this and thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to speak.
Very good, thank you. Mrs. Blankfield, I see you're raising your hand, you may have the floor.
This is a tough one. I'm very much a proponent of recycling. It's disturbing to me to think that so much of what we produce, this country especially, is going to end in landfills. However, as Mr. Gould so eloquently put it and Mrs. Weiss began the conversation with, we are in a position financially where we have to make decisions that those monies have to be spent elsewhere. It's not a matter of, well, maybe, it's, it may be someone's salary, it may be someone's benefit. Again, you know, hopefully from my lips to God's ear, we're going to come to a time where there's more of a demand for recyclable materials. And we can revisit this and, and pick it, pick it up again and, and have a healthy and robust recycling program. But right now to spend money to pay to have it taken and we don't even recycle as robustly as other communities. I, I can't vote for this. I'm sorry to say it, but I can't.
Thank you, Mrs. Blankfield, Mrs. Purdy, I saw you raise your hand.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I have to say, no one is happier than I that we have a council that is watching the pennies so closely. Because we have not always had that and I appreciate that. We provided a lot of latitude to our new mayor when he came in to do a lot of spending. And now this council is actually standing up and reining in. And I'm speaking of the older members, not the newer members, so I think that is wonderful. And I think we must do that and it is important to focus on the bottom line. But we have the entire budget to look for savings, not just to frighten people about backyard trash pickup if we continue to use recycling and pay for recycling. Sixteen thousand dollars is probably less than point one percent of the city's budget. So my position is, this is a value, we have a value. We believe in this, I believe in this because it has to start somewhere. There is an argument for saving and it is important to save right now. But we also are providing services, as you've pointed out, because the city isn't a business. This isn't a business, this is about service. And if our values are about recycling and trying to spur every little bit to save this world because of the climate change and the dire possibilities for the future, sixteen thousand dollars does not seem to me to be the, the place to really start to rein in. And I know we want to look at every piece of budget that we have. But again, this is a value situation and I, I support recycling even though we have to pay for it. Because I think the value of the city is to do this, is to go ahead and put these items out for potential reuse and try to do what little bit we can in terms of the future of the planet, basically, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Purdy, Mr. Rock, I think I saw you next, go ahead.
Yes, I want to echo my colleague, Councilwoman Purdy's point. We, we discussed this at length in the committee meeting and I am of the firm belief that if we end this program because of sixteen thousand dollars today, when we don't know what the market price is going to be of recyclable goods next year or the year after, it's going to be really hard to reinstitute, reinstitute that program. If we eliminate the recycling program in its entirety, there's still a cost to remove the rubbish. Because those pop cans, those, everything that you're recycling is going to now go on a landfill and there's still a cost to that. And the delta that we explored really wasn't that much between throwing it away and recycling it. Now, this is the Heights, it's a progressive community, to go back and tell your constituents that, hmm, we're going to get rid of a recycling program, it's not going to go very well. Yes, we're going to save some money, but you know what, you know, we're, we are a government entity and it's about doing what's right and what's doing right for the environment, for our planet. And, you know, if there were no regulations whatsoever, yeah, things could be done quicker and cheaper, but that's not what's right. What's right here is doing what we have been doing. And again, this is a market price of recyclable goods that is not marketable right now. It can be in a few years, we don't know. We used to get paid for recycling up until last year, you know, we have you know, a trade war happening, you know, China's not buying our recyclables. We don't know what, who, who's going to even be president next year, that all could change. And to unlearn a program and to just go back and have to relearn it a year later or two years later, I just think is silly. And again, it, it, it is not a lot of money, I don't know what we spend a year in trash, we've looked at so many different figures, but in the grand scheme of things, it, it was so silly, I don't know why we would even get rid of a program like that.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. I, I know, Mr. Erdo, you'd raised your hand. Did you still want to speak?
Yes, please. Thank you. First off, I'd like to say that I respect the opinions of everybody here and I'll be brief. I also respect Mr. Pecorni and his abilities and, and you know, his decision-making when it comes to the service of our community. And also, maybe it's, I, I don't think sixteen thousand dollars is too much to ask for a recycling program personally. And, and perhaps it's a matter of, maybe we look at it this way. You know, do we as council people make decisions based on, you know, what we think is best for the city? Or, or perhaps do we take advice from all of our residents and if there's an overwhelming opinion about an issue, we follow that. And I believe that there will be an overwhelming outpouring of comments and discussion from our residents if we, if we stop this program for sixteen thousand dollars. So there you go.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Erdo. You have the floor.
With all due respect to my colleagues, and I do mean that, I, I don't think it's silly. I think that it's been evidenced by the study and, and Mr. Pecorni has told us repeatedly how extraordinarily little this community cares about recycling and that's evidenced by how little they recycle. I'm, I am a, you know, dyed-in-the-wool environmentalist kind of person. And I don't think, I, I certainly believe that our residents are bright enough to relearn how to recycle should the financial cult, you know, climate in this country change. And we should be lucky enough to actually have recyclables be worth anything to anyone. I'm aware of how many landfills close every single day because so much is going to them and, and I find it heartbreaking. However, I, I think they're bright enough to relearn how to recycle in a year or two from my lips to God's ear that we should be able to actually be paid for recycling again. But we're not even recycling that much and to have to shell out money for the little that we do, I think it's money we could better spend elsewhere now. I'm not saying end recycling forever in the city of University Heights, I'm, I'm not going to be that arrogant. I certainly think though that at the present time and in this circumstance, it may be something that we, we should consider.
Well, I will argue that we are recycling, it's just that some of our recyclables do end up in the trash. Because when the two bins in the front of the Kubota are filled, sorry, that's my dog, when the two bins in the front of the Kubota are filled, the rest goes in the trash. So it's not without a good effort, but sometimes without the person.
And I hear what you're saying, however, you know, we've, we've seen that compared to other communities, statistically, we recycle much, much, much less. That, that's, that's not something you can argue, it's a fact. And I think, I think it would be wonderful if when the time comes again that maybe we can find a way to get our residents actually behind recycling in a, in a really robust way.
And I just want to say, you know, one other thing, the committee did have, did have a middle ground.
Yeah.
But only a couple of us were willing, willing to do that. And that, that was have your loose recyclables brought to this, brought to City Hall. And I was willing, you know, to, to spend a few thousand dollars on that. I do not think that twenty thousand dollars is insignificant. Every twenty thousand dollars, five, ten times over is real money, is real positions. And, you know, we're talking about a budget for twenty twenty-one that is not going to be easy. And, you know, again, I said that twenty thousand dollars is a part-time employee or somebody's benefits, so that is not insignificant.
Or a vehicle for the police department.
So, you know, I just, there is a middle ground, but nobody wanted to, there wasn't a majority that wanted to discuss that middle ground further.
Yeah, no, no.
Suggest the middle ground is problematic because the city limits our time going up to City Hall.
That's not true, the service director said that it's open twenty-four hours a day in the back of the building.
The service director suggested that it was not a good idea, that they were not set up to do that.
That's right, that was what it was, thank you, Phil, it was the, the trucks and all, but regardless, I'm willing to make the motion to pass this as an emergency.
I'll second.
Mayor, was this on emergency or is this?
Well, this is listed on emergency and.
So I'll make the motion on emergency.
Okay. I would also note that there was an agenda item where we could just do it by motion. But we could start with what's on the agenda, you know, now, this is the agenda item that we put forth. So we have a motion by Mrs. Purdy to approve ordinance twenty twenty forty-four on emergency. Is there a second?
Mr. Rock.
I second it.
Is there any discussion? Well, before we proceed, I, I didn't say anything and, and I feel like I should, you know, for the record, I may have said a few things in the committee. I said a few things in advance of this, I referred this matter to committee, had Mr. Pecorni bring it to the committee's attention well before today's meeting because I knew that there could be a diversity of opinion on this and, and, and we had a very thoughtful discussion, I thought, in committee. So I, I want to start from that point that, that, that it's, it's difficult to know what the right answer here is, is because there, there are some competing interests and things that, that we do need to consider. I do want to clear up a few things, though, there was a suggestion that in the city of Cleveland, you know, whether or not they're recycling, well, they're not recycling because they're, they're not under a contract to, to do so. They have not made a decision to do what we are considering doing here, which is to actually pay to recycle at the rate of ninety-six dollars a ton. Whereas before we, we were paid to provide recycling, we, we were paid a grand total of four hundred dollars last year. But nevertheless, we were paid as opposed to paying to recycle and, and that is, that is a bitter pill to swallow. In the long run, I want to believe that recycling markets will improve and that industry will develop such to, to use our recycling, recyclable materials again. You know, since China is not using our materials the way they once did. And that we, we will reach again, a time when material will be valuable enough that it will not be cheaper to landfill the materials, which it would be. I mean, one could make the individual choice even if we recycle, that if you would rather throw away that aluminum can, if you'd rather throw away that bottle, you could. I mean, I, I suppose you could do that now and, and I think people do do that now is reflected by the recycling numbers. I do know that, that there, you know, historically, University Heights own recycling lags behind other communities. Part of that's because of the Blue Bag Program, part of that is, as Mr. Pecorni could, could tell you, has to do with the, the times at which communities weigh what is recycled versus when we weigh what is recycled and some of the other communities' numbers may actually be inflated. But that's neither here nor there for this discussion. I, I do want to say that if you're a proponent of recycling, sixteen thousand dollars is not too much to pay. I, I want to say that, 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 that years of encouraging recycling and recycling habits would be lost by ending recycling. And, and that habits and practices will have to be relearned and reinstituted, of course, we can learn again. But, but to be a good steward of the planet, even, even having to pay as opposed to being paid for recycling, I, I think that is still a value that, that this community has and should be reflected here i- in our vote here in city government, I think we should lead on this issue. I mean, Richmond Heights did do away with their recycling program. I'd rather not go that route if, if we don't have to and we don't have to. And while could do the, the drop-off program, you know, the thing is, is we don't have a lot of space here for that. Even if we do let people come here twenty-four hours a day. If you ride out in Cuyahoga County, you, you can see in, in various townships and other areas where they have large pendant areas with all kinds of different containers where residents may roll up and sort and, and put items in, we don't have space for that here. This is, this is not that kind of community, we don't have an, an area that we ought to, that we could dedicate to append an area like that. And, and, and we have thirteen thousand people that would try to go through there from time to time. Okay, not everybody would do it, but, 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 and, and probably fewer would, our recycling numbers would surely go down if it was something that we had to deliver, residents had to deliver themselves rather than pick up. And I think we would have an incredible amount of blowback from our residents if they weren't able to do recycling at their home anymore. And, and with that, you know, I'm not going to say that sixteen thousand is or isn't real money, that, you know, we're, we're talking about thirty-two thousand four hundred dollars over the next two years. But also over the next two years, we're going to spend an extra eight hundred thousand dollars doing backup backyard pickup. When if we had a, a contract like South Euclid did with Kimball, we could be spending less than fifteen dollars per house, per month for, for, for solid waste and recycling pickup and, and we'd be saving that four hundred as well as the, the, you know, the money we're looking to spend here. So, so there are other decisions we could be making that would be saving a lot more money than, than, than this seeming drop in the bucket. I mean, you know, I, I, I think a lend price, a lane price, you know, pennies turn into pounds, you know, and, and the thing is, is that small amounts do accumulate, you know, and I do appreciate that. But I think if you support recycling, if you want to be a good steward of the planet, we find a way to spend the sixteen thousand bucks this year to do this. As it is, our, our, the solid waste rate is going to go down from forty-one ninety to forty and, and there's going to be some savings there. And, you know, if, if, if you'd rather throw, if you'd rather landfill it than recycle it, that's up to you, you could still do that in your home. If, if you know that, you know, that, that putting that, that bottle or can, I was reaching for a bottle or can, but you don't actually put this in there. But if, if you know that bottle or can is actually going to cost us more, putting it in the blue bag, you can put it in the brown bag. But if you value what it means to recycle these things, then you still put it in the blue bag, even though we got to pay more. So it, it is my hope that we pass this this evening. It is my hope that, 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 that we lead better than the city of Cleveland has on the issue. I think we've been upfront with our residents in letting them know that, you know, this is something that, that costs. What I've heard from residents has been that we should be going ahead and paying for this, not that we should, not that we should end it. Perhaps you've heard differently. This is what I'm hearing from folks when, when I talk to them. So I'm hopeful that, that, that people will support this. I'm hopeful that people that have spoken against it will, will think one more time before they vote and, and, and will support recycling and support this motion. So, so that's what I have to say about it. If, if happy though to give back the floor to anybody who wants to talk further, we are having discussion here. So, Mr. Rock?
Just more of a question about procedure. Does this have to be on emergency? Because being that it, it sounds contentious, it may not pass on emergency.
Yeah, I'm concerned about that too. And, and, you know, we did have also, it was listed originally on, on the agenda in duplicate as letter M and letter N. M being an ordinance, N being a motion. An ordinance is, is one way of doing it. A motion's another way of doing it. If it's an ordinance on emergency, then, then yeah, you need five to pass. If it's simply a motion, I think a simple majority will do. Mr. McConville, can you weigh in, please?
That's correct. Council would have to, you know, modify their agenda at this point to, to do it that way. But, you know, one of the quirks of our charter is that we allow passage of contracts by motion and the motions require an affirmative vote of four.
Okay.
But there's not a time constraint in which this has to be answered or passed this week, correct? If we did amend that?
Well, the, the, here's the thing, if, if it's by, well, I'm sorry, Mr. McConville, why don't you weigh in on?
Well, I was going to say that if the, if the, I guess if you call the question, then, then you, you know, it could be voted down. But if the rules were not suspended, if, if there were not enough votes to suspend the rules, you would go on to second reading.
Oh, okay.
But also alternatively, we could amend the agenda and simply make a motion rather than considering the ordinance. Is that correct?
You, you could. It's council's agenda. They're allowed to change their agenda during the course of a meeting. I mean, it's a little unusual, but yes, technically you can do that procedurally.
Very good. This is why she, you raised your hand to be recognized. You have the floor.
I'm just having a problem that this is a legislative issue and that the mayor is weighing in on how to change the agenda.
Oh, I chair the meeting, so, you know, this is, going over procedure would be prerogative of the chair.
To the law director or the mayor, are you saying we, we have this on the agenda twice already, once is an ordinance and once is a motion? Or are you saying, law director, that we have to amend what we're doing because we have the ordinance on? I'm a little confused now, so I apologize.
The, the ordinance was published, I'm sorry, the agenda was published with the ordinance and with a motion. And I indicated to the mayor that that was duplicative, that you needed one or the other. You did not need both. And as I've said many times before, my preference as a best practice is to pass things by ordinance. Notwithstanding the fact that our charter allows for motion. So the, in response to my comment that those items were duplicative, I think the motions were deleted in an amended agenda. And so what the mayor, I think what the mayor is suggesting is that rather than consider the ordinance, there would be a vote by council to amend their agenda and to add the motion back on to the agenda. Because the voting requirements for the motion differ from those for the ordinance. And, and what I'm saying is that if the question's called, the vote will decide the matter. But if you don't suspend the rules, either because you don't have the votes or because the motion is withdrawn, then you would be on second reading at your next meeting on this ordinance, in which case a simple majority vote would rule the day.
But do we have to pass it now? Is that why it's on emergency?
Well, the contract's going to expire at the end of the month.
Okay.
So, you know, in theory, I suppose, if, if, if it passed at the next meeting, it would become law within third, in, in 30 days, well, 30 days from pass it.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Remember, there's a difference between emergency and suspension.
All right.
Suspension is a suspension of the two reading rule that's required by charter. You cannot have an instance of suspension without emergency. So if you suspend, you're enacting on emergency by definition, by necessity. However, you can also enact on emergency without suspending. You can go through your two readings, pass on emergency after your second reading, in which case the ordinance becomes immediately effective.
You're saying the second.
Clearly.
Yeah, the second reading on emergency can pass with a simple majority.
Correct.
All right.
I'm not in favor of making this a motion personally. I, I feel like we've got it on as an ordinance. It, I mean, I, I would like to see it pass. I've spoken in favor of this, but I don't want to play that, I, I don't want to do that kind of thing. It's on our agenda and I'd prefer to leave it that way personally. I, I don't know what others think. If you, others.
I agree with that. Well, we're going to vote on the suspension of rules, so we'll, we'll know where that stands.
Right. If the suspension of rules does not pass, then we don't proceed with the second vote. Instead, this is treated as first reading and it's back on the agenda for the next meeting.
And remind me, the suspension of rules requires a super majority of five?
Correct.
Call the question.
All right.
I'll call. Did you call Justin?
Yes, Mr..
Thank you.
The question, Mrs. Partey also called the question, Mr. Gould.
Justin, yeah.
Yes. And, you know, so the question has been called. We will take up to two votes. We'll see how the first one goes. And the first one is on the suspension of the rules.
One, one thing, man, just looking at the charter, I misspoke on one item, which is that if it's passed on emergency, whether it's after a suspension of the rules or after two readings, it has to be passed by two.
It has to be passed how?
It has to be, any emergency ordinance, whether the rules are suspended or not, requires a two-thirds majority vote. So you would, you would be needing five votes to pass the ordinance on emergency.
All right. Well, then, that's what I thought. So it seems to me then, the consequence of, of, of not passing this tonight or passing it next time means it'll be 30 days. If it, if it passes not on emergency at the next meeting, then it'll be 30 days before it's law and thus 30 days before the mayor can enter into the contract, which means we'll be well into the month of October and out of contract on recycling. So no recycling will happen. We'll be throwing away every one of those blue bags for, for those first three or four weeks of October, or we'll just be piling them up where the leaves normally go.
There's not a continuance on that last contract, a month to month?
The, the contract ends at the end of the month. So.
Mayor, there might not be recycling next month at all. I don't know. We're about to find out.
Was the question called?
It was. We should probably vote unless there are more questions on process.
We should, we should. If, if there's no further questions about order and process, the question has been called, has been pointed out. We should then proceed with up to two votes, the first being a vote on the suspension of the rules. So, Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Blingfield?
I'm still confused. And, and I apologize.
And I apologize. I, I am totally confused too. You all have taken me.
I'd like Luke, I'd like Luke to, to clarify for us. So if, if we suspend the rules, give, give us, give us both scenarios.
Okay. You can suspend the rules, which requires five votes. That will call the question. In order to pass on emergency, you will need five votes to pass. So a four-three vote means that the measure does not pass and it is disposed of on your agenda. Or you can vote not to suspend, in which case the matter will appear on the agenda at your next meeting for second reading, but it's still on emergency. So you again will need five votes to pass. And I think if you don't get the five votes, you're, I mean, that, that's actually a question I would have to look at. What, what if it's four-three after your suspension?
Well, I think what you do then is, is if you, is, is, yeah, I mean, if it's four-three after suspension, I don't believe that passes.
Why is it on emergency on the second reading if it's going to take 30 days anyway? Why is it just on second reading and then it takes 30 days?
It wouldn't take 30 days.
It wouldn't take 30 days.
Would not take 30 days.
So I suppose you could move in that instance, if you didn't think you had enough to pass it on emergency, to simply move to adopt wait 30 days sign. And we just have no recycling in the city of University Heights for the first, you know, two-thirds of October.
So, Mr. McConville, on the matter of procedure, if I vote no on the suspension of the rules, then this will not go to a vote for emergency tonight and we pass to second reading to later this month. Is that accurate?
That's accurate as long as there are at least two other members who vote no, you know. So a four-three vote in favor of suspension is not sufficient. You need a minimum of five votes to suspend. And so a four-three vote or less means that it just goes on to your next agenda on second reading.
Correct. Thank you.
Well, that's, I would want to take a quick look at that, but I think the way that that would work is that if, if the question is called on emergency, then you need five votes, even though you're on second reading, because the impact of the emergency is to make it immediately effective. And the question would be, what would happen if you had a four-three vote on your second reading? Does that mean that the measure goes into effect after 30 days? I think the answer is probably yes, but I want to clarify that.
Well, that's something I, I, it would seem that's something we would be able to clarify between now and the next meeting. And, and, and what we do here doesn't necessarily affect that as long as it advances to the next meeting.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So it would seem to answer the procedural question, if three vote no, or three or more vote no on the suspension of the rules, that we don't take the second vote, it simply moves on to the next agenda on second reading.
Correct.
Okay. Have all points of order been, have all questions regarding the points of order and the procedure been satisfied at this point?
No, I'm still confused. I'm only kidding. Thank you very much, Mr. McConville.
I'll, I'll put together a brief memo for all council members that just walks through the distinction between suspension and adoption.
Thank you.
Very good. Very good. Well, the question has been called and we will take up to two votes, depending on the outcome of the first one. And the first vote is on the suspension of the rules. Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Blingfield?
No.
Mrs. Berry?
Yes.
Mrs. Partey?
No, for suspending the rules, correct?
No, see, I'm confused. I don't know how I'm voting. I, I, because I'm voting for recycling, so you are. I don't know what, I, I'm totally confused.
May I suggest that your, your vote would be yes, Councilwoman Partey, if, if on the suspension, because if you got suspension, then you would be able to vote. But I just, I, I will be voting no, but I just would suggest that if, if that was your position, that you wanted to vote tonight and move on to the second vote, that you'd vote yes.
On the other hand, Mrs. Partey, if you wanted to ensure that we didn't take the second vote because.
That's what I want to ensure. Thank, thank you. Thank you, mayor. I vote no. Thank you.
I'm, well.
Miss Berry?
Yes. I, I, I'm for recycling. I, you, you are telling me what I'm supposed to do to, to make that happen because I am totally.
I would, I would suggest to you as legal counsel for, for council, for, for city council, that your, your best chance for a potential adoption of the recycling is to vote no on the suspension so that the matter goes on second reading
Correct.
at the next meeting and politics can play out over the next, you know, two-week period and who knows what will happen.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I, I think that if you want to reconsider, have your vote reconsidered, you should.
Yeah, I want it to be reconsidered to, to go the way you told me I should go so that recycling can happen if I vote, when I vote that way. If that makes sense.
Berry, are you changing your vote from a yes to a no?
Yes, that's what I'm doing.
Okay. I, I think. Mrs. Berry, and so your vote is now a no.
Thank you.
All right.
Mrs. Weiss? I'm sorry, Mrs. Weiss?
No.
Mr. Erdel?
No.
Mr. Rock?
Say no on this suspension of rules.
Mr. Gould?
No.
Okay, very good. The, the motion to suspend the rules, we will proceed with a motion to consider the matter on emergency. This is now treated as a first reading and will appear on the agenda of the next regular city council meeting. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is item O, a motion for authorization to bid the 2020-1 citywide fall tree planting program contract. Mr. McCourney, you have the floor, sir.
Mayor, mayor, does that mean the, wait, you went from M to O? Is N then, don't we have to table N?
And, and was deleted on the amended agenda. If you haven't amended.
Deleted one. I am so sorry. I must be working from an old agenda. I apologize. Sorry. Go ahead.
Yes. So, yeah, yeah, item N was deleted on the amended agenda, which was why, the, the, that's the matter I brought up earlier. If we'd added N back, could we consider it as motion instead? That, that, that's not what we're doing. So.
It's going live on my agenda, so sorry, too many things.
Too many agendas.
Yeah.
Very good. So we are, we are now on item O, which is a motion for authorization to bid the 2020-1 citywide fall tree planting program contract. And, Mr. McCourney, you now have the floor.
Thank you very much, mayor. This is our annual citywide fall planting program. It usually follows the program that we have next, which is our tree pruning and removal program. And this program is being suggested to do exactly that. So it's our annual tree planting program for trees on public properties, which are the tree lawns, medians and other public properties. This year's program's going to concentrate in zone two, which as I was commenting, is the area we did pruning and removals last year. So it's going to be the northeastern section of town, starting with Bain Tree, Sillsby. Sillsby, Groveland, and working our way south back to Fairmont. We pruned all the way to East Carroll last year. So we'll be planting those sites where we've removed trees from last year. The proposed contract will have approximately 125 or 120 trees, I'm sorry, and an estimated cost of $45,000. So funding will come from the Tree Improvement Fund, which was discussed briefly earlier this evening. And I'm requesting council's authorization to advertise and bid this project.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Are there any questions for Mr. Pecorni?
Can I say something? Just to, just to clarify, the cost of this program will actually not be applied to the, the expenditures that we're going to be making this year out of the budget. This is out of a fund that exists and takes care of itself. Yes?
Would you like to respond to that? I, it will be coming out of the Tree Improvement Fund, which is one of the items that were earlier put on the agenda for assessment across the city. And those funds go into the Tree Improvement Fund 205440755240, which can only be spent on tree maintenance.
It's a special assessment fund, right?
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I think that clears that up. Any further questions? Is there a motion then for authorization to bid the 2020 dash one citywide fall tree planning program contract?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Very good. Motion by Mrs. Pardee. Is there a second? Was that a second? Yes, second by Mr. Erdel. Any discussion? Mrs. Weiss?
I think our tree program is fabulous. I know that we have a special fund and assessments go there. I think pruning is essential. You don't want unsafe trees to be in the city. But even though it's a special fund, it is cash at the same time that would have to be utilized. So I just, you know, it's I, I think, I don't know, I guess I just want to make a statement that even if we, we go out for bid and, and we do this, it's even though the, the the month, the fund has money, if we actually utilize it, it's our cash that's, that's utilized. So there, you know, there is a we just have to differentiate between those two things. That's all.
Right. Going out to bid does not require that we actually accept any of the bids. That happened with earlier this year and we can cross that bridge when we come to it. At this point, I, I would urge that we go ahead with bids and then we can make a decision if we want to accept one. But thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Are there any further comments or questions? All right. Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Pardee?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Ghul?
Hi.
Very good. Motion carries. Next is item P, motion for authorization to bid the 2020 dash two tree pruning and removal contract. Mr. Pecorni, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Mayor. This is our tree pruning program for public properties. Covers pruning and removal of trees that are considered dangerous and/or have other issues with them, such as ash trees that may be infected with Emerald Ash Core. Our focus this year is going to be on areas that haven't been done in the past seven years. So it's kind of a little sporadic in its location. It won't be all in one zone. It will have approximately 600 trees to be pruned and/or removed. And we're estimating the cost to be about $100,000, which will come again from the tree fund. I attached a map of the streets that we intend to do and the areas we intend to do. So we're going to be looking at trees in Walter Stinson Community Park on sections of North Cliff, Charney, Traymore, Saybrook, Fenwood, down to Hillbrook and the section of Hillbrook down to Meadowbrook. And then Bushnell, the large oak trees that we have on Bushnell between Warrensville Center and Renford. And South Belfour from Cedar down to Fairmont. And I'm recommending that we go out to bid and I will bring the results of those bids back to council.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Any questions for Mr. Pecorni? There are no questions. Is there a motion for authorization to bid the 2020 dash two tree pruning and removal contract?
Done move, Mayor.
Very good. Motion by Mr. Rock. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Pardee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Pardee?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Ghul?
Hi.
Very good. Motion carries. Next is item Q, motion to accept radiological instrumentation from the Ohio Emergency Management Agency, OEMA. The receiving and the calibration of one Lovellum 26 dash three high range Frisker and five pocket decimeters. I understand Chief Perko, I see, is on the line via phone. Chief Perko, if you're able to unmute, you have the floor. Mrs. Thomas, could you try to unmute the chief? It may be that we need to unmute him.
Which number is he?
Two, one, six, three, one, four, seventeen, eighty-seven. Do you see it?
Yeah. All I can do is request that he unmute.
I see. Okay.
I sent him a text message.
There he is. He just unmuted. Very good. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the motion to accept the radiological equipment. This is a program that's managed by the Ohio Emergency Management for radiological equipment. We have had a meter detector for approximately 20 years that was offered by the county. This was also funded for calibration in which a few years back, approximately, going back three to five years now, was unable to be calibrated due to its age. The county knew that a lot of the fleet they had in the county was aging. Fortunately, they were able to secure funding with the Ohio Emergency Management Agency. And so that funding provided one of these meters for each municipality in the county. The meters valued approximately a thousand dollars and the the management agency is going to fund calibration annually, which will be controlled by the county. So these meters will replace the outdated meter. And it'll be used in the field for detecting different types of radiological alpha, beta and gamma rays. And then along with it, there will be no cost for any maintenance that's required due to calibration issues in the future.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Or excuse me, Mr. Chief Perko. Still on the last line. Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Perko? Is there a, a motion to accept the radiological instrumentation with an item Q?
Done move.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Blankfield, motion by Mrs. Weiss. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Pardee?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Ghul?
Hi.
Very good. Thank you. Motion carries. We are then on to item I, motion authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with Cuyahoga County for the permanent transfer of ownership of one three CDV 750 Charger indirect reading decimeters. Chief Perko, you once again have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, this agreement was reviewed by the law director. Same agreement that the county used for all the municipalities receiving this equipment and just states that they will be releasing one of these detection devices to us, along with the five decimeters. And will also provide the annual calibration with any necessary equipment needed to fulfill that. And then that will be for the life of the meter.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Chief Perko. Any questions for Chief Perko? Questions or comments? Oh, I want to thank the chief. Thank you. For authorization for the mayor to enter into an MOU with Cuyahoga County has set forth in item R for the Lovellum 26.3 Charger and the decimeters.
Done move, Mayor.
Very good. Motion by Mrs. Blankfield. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Pardee. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Pardee?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss? Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Ghul?
Hi.
Very good. Motion carries. We are now on to item S. Motion to hold an executive session immediately following the regular meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel, legal and/or real estate matters. We do have a real estate matter to discuss with regard to University Square. We do have legal slash personnel matters to discuss with respect to getting an update from our labor council on union negotiations. Is there a motion to hold executive sessions on those matters?
So I'm a second.
A motion by Mr. Erdel, second by Mr. Rock. Mrs. Thomas, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Pardee?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Ghul?
Hi.
Very good. We will hold an executive session at the end of the regular meeting. We now turn to Director's Reports Finance. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items briefly, working on closing out the month of August. Should have that done probably midweek next week. Big priority right now is to get, you know, the city has about 4,500 parcels. Council approved those assessments this evening, so I want to make sure, that's got to get filed with the county by Monday. So I'm going through pretty much parcel by parcel to make sure that the rates that are applied and the footage is calculated correctly. So that's going to take pretty much the majority of my time until Monday, when that gets filed. And other than that, I just want to say thanks for approving those items, particularly appropriations in the gas contract and the assessments this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions for Mr. Kennedy? All right. Seeing none, we will proceed to the Director of Law, Mr. McConville.
Mayor, given the executive sessions, I'll go ahead and deliver my report during the executive session.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Public safety, police, Chief Rogers, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item to briefly report on. Our office of community policing is looking at implementing a monthly coffee with a cap type community engagement event to be done virtually during the pandemic. So more information on that will be available in the near future. And that is all I have to report this time.
Very good. Rogers. Public safety, Chief Perko, are you still on the line? If you would unmute, please. If you have a report.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, since we met before the break, just tracking things related to the pandemic and our response needs, PPE for the city. We did do the large bulk order that you had approved back, I believe in June. That has been fulfilled and our PPE supply is adequate at this time for the entire city here. Also have started a behavioral health program within the department to offer different resources to our members should they need to seek them out. And then I know you also approved application for various grants late in the spring, early summer. Some of those are starting to trickle in now, so probably at the next meeting, I'll be able to bring some of those to you for your vote to accept them. And that is all I have to report.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Perko. Any questions for Chief Perko? Okay, seeing none. Service, Mr. Pecorni.
Thank you, Mayor. In response to the flooding issues that were raised due to the rains we had on Labor Day, Monday, the service department will be working on approximately 50 different locations that had complained about flooding. So we're locating the tees and checking the sewers to make sure there are no issues. In addition to that, we are continuing our cleaning and TVing of mainline sewers and will be concentrating in any area ongoing of the 50 homes. We currently have completed about 16 of them, I believe. That will go on for the next two weeks or so before that gets completed. Second item is the list of road repairs for patches and curb drains and catch basins. We will be working on that list as well. I heard council's issue earlier of wanting to get that done before winter. And nobody wants to get that done more than I do. So we will be working on that to have that done before winter as well. And that's my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Pecorni? All right. Next is building and I will be giving a report on behalf of the building department this evening. Since mid-April, we have not had a full-time building commissioner or director level employee of the building department or of the housing and community development department. I have been managing these departments directly, not only to manage and oversee, but to do a deep dive in the works of these departments. The essential functions of certified building officials, after an initial stint by Nino Monaco, have been done on a contract basis with our retired former building commissioner, James McReynolds, and with Howard Sonnenstein. Our housing inspectors have continued the rental registration program, the modified point of sale program, exteriors only through the emergency. And we resumed the exterior maintenance program. The essential work of the departments has continued. Plans are reviewed, inspections are performed and the work is done timely. Working with Mr. McReynolds and with administrative assistants Ruth Griswold and Dee Dallas, administration has developed and issued a recommended update to the schedule of fees for building. There has not been an update since Burl Rothschild was mayor. The current fees do not reflect the costs of the services actually provided. The proposed update does a much better job of recapturing the cost of service. This recommendation was provided to the Chair of the Council's Building and Housing Committee Councilwoman Barbara Blankfeld, as well as to all members of council. I believe that was on August 31st. I would ask that these fees be enacted to take effect by the first of the year, if not sooner. I am preparing and will be issuing a report reorganizing the building department and housing and community development department into a single department of community development, overseen by a single director level employee with three divisions, a building division, a housing division and a planning division, together with an organizational chart of employee responsibilities among the divisions. I have been working closely with the personnel in those departments, not only to oversee the essential work of the departments, but to prepare them for the changes that will be coming. Of particular interest to much of the public and among those A particular interest to much of the public, and among those changes that is in the works and will soon be deployed in beta form, will be to move the ordering of special pickups that are from our Building Department and onto our website. Historically, the fee has been collected by the Building Department because, unlike the Service Department, there has been a counter open to the public for accepting payments for permits and fees. And because our inspector needed to be able to check on orders of special pickups to know whether to tag items left on tree lawns. Due to COVID nineteen, we have not had that physical counter open. Payments have been left in the slot of the Building Department House or in the City Hall mailbox and processed from there. With the new system under development, the special pickup will be ordered on our website with a description of the items to be picked up, paid for by credit or debit card, and the information transmitted simultaneously to three departments: service, to perform the pickup, community development, to let the housing inspectors know if a special pickup order is pending at an address before tagging a rubbish pile, and finance, in order to reconcile the payments. At the next meeting, I will announce a date by which we expect the new service to go live. This concludes my report on behalf of these departments, both Building and Housing and Community Development. Does anybody have any questions for me with regard to this report or its contents?
Well, thank you. Thank you for getting the special pickup online, getting that together. Again, that's been in the works for a million years.
Yeah. Well, I would like to thank Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Guiman, as well, who's our web guy, as well as Mr. Corny and Ruth Endy in the Building Department for all their work in making sure that we are ready for that transition. It is, if Tracy's can accept a credit card for a pizza, then surely we can accept for a special pickup. So I know I've used that before, but I'm going to, I'm going to keep using it. All right, thank you. Next, then, if there's nothing further, is City Engineer, Mr. Chuni.
One brief report this evening, Mayor, is the Laurelhurst Waterline Project is ongoing. They completed the main line today. The entire water line is in all the way from East Carroll down to University Parkway. They have to do the tie-ins at University Parkway and Summerfield. That'll be completed by the end of the week. After that, as you know, the water line has to clean, or chlorinate and flush for several days, passing three tests in a row before we can hook the houses up. So we probably got a week in there where it happens, so then the flushing of the main, then they start hooking up the houses. I anticipate it'd be done by the middle of October.
Okay.
In the report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Chuni? All right, seeing none. We will proceed to Communications and Civic Engagement. Mr. Cook.
Good evening, everyone. We have twenty days and two hours and three minutes until the end of the census count. The good news is that we are already ahead of where we were in twenty ten. So far, we have an exactly seventy-four percent response rate. It's up from seventy-one and a half percent in twenty ten. Of course, twenty ten, we didn't have to deal with a pandemic. We didn't have to deal with all the John Carroll students disappearing right as the census was starting. And while, you know, some are back in town, you know, obviously J C U isn't in session in person, and it won't be for the semester. But we're going to try to chase them around a little bit more to get them to participate. But we're going to try and make up what we're losing in college student numbers and even stress more reaching out to people who rent in University Heights. And that's not just, you know, renting a house, but people who live in the apartment complexes. So we'll get that number up higher, and we'll have a strong push to the end and get us to think as high as we've ever been in the history of the census in our city.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Cook. I want to thank you for your work on this. I know that, you know, in spite of the pandemic, we've actually increased our numbers from the last census. And I am hopeful that, in spite of the estimates that have shown a dwindling population, you know, knowing what we know on the ground about the number of families that have been moving into the city, I hope that we are in for a pleasant surprise when we get our numbers. I appreciate that renters have continued to be historically an undercounted number, and, you know, any efforts that we can to shore up the renter response will run this up for the next ten years. I mean, all this CARES Act money, every, you know, which is just one example, but so much funding that is made available to the city, they looked at that number, and that number controls what we get. And every additional person counted are dollars for the city. So, you know, anything you can do, remind your friends, remind your neighbors, you know, you got to respond to this. You got to respond to the census. Nothing in the census will be used against you. If you got, you know, we have a three unrelated residents rule in the city. If you got six unrelated residents in your house, and you tell the Census Bureau, we'll never know about it because only the census knows about that. If you're not paying your taxes, Rita doesn't hear about it. The IRS doesn't hear about it. Only the census knows where you are and who you are and what you're doing. So don't worry about being persecuted or pursued by any other branch or agency of government. Just respond to the census and be counted. It helps the city. Please do it.
Thank you. That's what I'm going to do. Thank you, Mayor. What I'm going to do now is, you know, I've talked to some of you about it. I'm going to send you a link to the census response map. So they update about every other day so you can see where the numbers are and where they are in the four census tracts in the city. So again, I'll say in the email, I'll say now, if you have any questions on how that works, just shoot me an email, give me a call, and I'll walk you through it. Thank you.
Just to add to that, that these maps do not provide granular data. The federal government does not give that to us. We are not able to say this house hasn't responded. Let's knock on that door. They do have people that are knocking on doors in the community. We've spoken with at least one of them. So we know that we have somebody here doing that, and, you know, I wish him well. I wish him expediency, and I hope he counts a lot of people. So Larry, go get him. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Cook? All right. Then we will go on to Economic Development. Mrs. Drucker could not be here this evening, but I have a report from her, so I will read it now. Any of the eyes are hers. So below is my report for council for the September nine council meeting. Number one, the first version of the R F P for the Comprehensive Zoning Code has been drafted and will be ready to review by the Economic Development Committee at their next meeting. Two, B R Canes is moving forward with their developments. The house on Northwood has been sold and is currently under construction. The property located at three five zero five Talomor has been sold, and permits were picked up on eight thirty one. Construction on that site will begin by month's end. As a reminder, the resident meeting for this property was held on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty. Canes is completing a set of drawings to submit to A R B for the South Green Lot. Developers also in the process of working with their outside architects on a set of drawings for the South Taylor Residential attached site. Once those are completed, they will begin the approval process with the city. Number three, Domus Construction purchased the property at four four nine nine Groveland. The plan is to demolish the existing home and build two new homes. The builder will need to submit plans for a lot consolidation and lot split. When this item is placed on either the council or the planning commission agenda, council will want to ensure surrounding property owners are notified of the proposed development per the notification provisions. This is not a C I C project and therefore will fall under the council holding, and therefore will fall under council holding the resident meeting. Number four, I have drafted a small business assistance program, and Brendan Zach has drafted a rental assistance program, a mortgage assistance program, and a utility assistance program to be implemented as part of the CARES Act funds received by the city. Upon review from the mayor and law director, these programs will be on the September twenty first council agenda. Number five, the plans for the parking lot improvements to two one one five South Taylor, which is the former K F C site, were approved contingent upon the approval of the easement by the city. Of course, well, you do that last part because we did address that earlier this meeting. But this concludes the report of the Economic Development Director. Kelly, I will make sure I forward this to you, as well as the Building Department and mayor's reports for your ease for the minutes. Next, then, is, oh, well, Housing Community Development, I already gave that report. So we now go to council committee reports. Building and Housing Chair, Councilwoman Barbara Blankfeld, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So the Building and Housing Committee has met a few times over the summer break, and will meet again in the month of September. We continue to review for preparation for council's consideration at a future meeting, a review of codified ordinance section twelve eighty point ten on rental registrations, section twelve eighty point eleven A nine on occupied regulated apartment structures. And as you had mentioned, a review of the Building Department permit fees. So those have been discussed over the summer break and will be discussed again at a meeting later this month. Also, we're delighted to hear you say that the long-awaited organizational structure or reorganization of the Building and Housing Department will be made public soon. We've all been talking about that. I know that's been in the works, and we've asked for that a couple of times, so it'll be glad to see how that's all shaking out. We appreciate that.
Very good. I look forward to speaking with you at length about the proposal. Thank you, Mrs. Blankfeld. Next, then, is Community Outreach. Councilwoman Susan Purdy.
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Economic Development, Councilman John Rock. Mr. Rock.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance, Vice Mayor Michelle Weiss.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There is a strategic planning committee meeting, which is a subcommittee of the Finance Committee, planned for the next couple of weeks. I forget the exact date. This will be a probably six to twelve-month project where a strategic plan for the city, short-term and long-term, will be developed. In October, I hope to start budget meetings. We're going to get that on the calendar. You know, we hope to get it done in December. Last year, unfortunately, it was passed in March, which is totally legal, but we didn't have enough data at that point. So the goal is to have the budget passed by December, so we will start that in October. And just want to say I am so glad that credit cards will be coming to University Heights for backyard pickup. I have pushed this for, I don't know how many years already, and our residents will appreciate that also.
Yes, you're welcome, Mrs. Weiss. And, you know, I was thanking people for getting this done. I omitted Mrs. Weiss because I will tell you that she's emailed me and contacted me about this. And there were a couple of times when I got an email that said, you know, Mayor, I think now is a great time to do this. I thought, you got to be kidding. Now is not, no, actually, you're right. Now is a great time. Go ahead and do this. And I sat down, you know, with Dennis and with Mark and everyone said, hey, you know, we got to do this thing. It's about time. And with the pandemic, it's especially time. You know, we got people coming up here and putting checks in mailboxes. And, you know, that works, but this will work better. It really will for everybody. So I'm excited about it, too. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Oh, and I have that Finance Subcommittee Strategic Plan Meeting for the fifteenth Tuesday at seven P M. So that's what I have. Is that a joint meeting with the Citizens Finance Committee? Or is that, I have none clear.
Second meeting. There's only a few participants that are going to be on the committee, and then, of course, it's a public meeting.
Well, sure. Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. Recreation, Philip Erdl. Mr. Erdl, Councilman Erdl, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. No report.
Very good. Thank you. Safety, Councilwoman Sandra Berry. Mrs. Berry.
I believe you put it in your report, and I don't really have anything to add to that.
Okay. I will add, you know, working on that with you, with this group of citizens, has been one of the more rewarding things I've gotten to do as mayor. So I'm glad we've gotten to do this, and I'm really looking forward to next week's presentation in two weeks. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Service and Utilities, Justin Gould. Mr. Gould, Councilman, you have the floor. Councilman.
Ah, Mayor, I think, I think Council, Vice Mayor Weiss misspoke a moment ago when she said credit cards are coming for backyard trash pickup. That, in fact, is not one of our plans for the Service Committee meeting, but I'm grateful that they're coming for special pickups. You know, you heard the results of the meeting that we had for recycling and that review. I believe, Kelly, do we have that published yet on the seventeenth? Coming up shortly, we'll be having one of the first public hearings to hear citizen input regarding the solid waste study that we had. You know, council had received this study. We finalized that report. We have a finalized report to review and have published that. And I think it's important now to hear from citizens and hear their input on this solid waste study. There are certain provisions that are outlined here. There are certain potential options that are outlined there, from keeping things the way that they are to changing to automated pickup with in-house service, and finally, an option to change to automated pickup with a contract service, without an in-house service. So I think all of those will be up for discussion and citizen input about the direction that we want the city to go. I think that there's some options that are cost-saving options, and then there's also going to be a balance of service and expectation. So we'll have that coming up, Mayor, and that's the end of my report.
Very good. Very good. Did you say that you were looking at having this meeting on the seventeenth?
I believe so. Kelly polled numbers and has the results of those, so I don't think it's been published yet, but.
I thought you were holding off on that.
Holding off on?
The citizen portion.
No.
Okay. Let's get that cleared up, then.
Okay, so.
So the seventeenth at, I assume, seven o'clock or?
I don't know the date. I just, I know that Kelly was doing a poll and had a date that was available to all committee members.
Okay. Well, let's get that firmed up here, you know.
I'll check.
Okay, yeah. Kelly, if you would check and then get that out to all council members because we'll want to make sure. We know there'll be a lot of interest, and we're going to want to make sure people are aware of it.
And this is, Mayor, I anticipate this being one of several hearings. So if somebody does not have the opportunity to join next time, there certainly, I do not intend this to be going with a suggestion from my committee to council to consider at the next council meeting. I anticipate this being a process of various views and inputs from citizens over a period of time.
Okay, very good. Then we'll anticipate that the seventeenth, some similar date, will be the first of multiple. Okay. Excellent. Excellent. Okay, we will now go to Committee of the Whole. Vice Mayor Michelle Weiss, do you have a report? I can't hear you.
No report, Mayor.
Okay, very good. All right. Well, we have now concluded the regular portion of our agenda and our reports. We did move to go into an executive session for the update on labor and for University Square. Labor Negotiations, this is our update. I have messaged our legal counsel for labor to let him know. Meeting. I do not anticipate that there will be any motions or votes following the executive session. So while members of the public are welcome to stay on.
It's smart.
Yeah, while they are welcome to stay on, while we go into a break room to do our executive sessions, I do not anticipate that there'll be any further business other than a motion to adjourn. So that said, if you are not still here when we come back, have a good evening. We will see you presumably at one of the committee meetings or at the next regular meeting scheduled for September twenty first at seven P M. That's Monday, the twenty first. So if there's nothing further, I know Kelly will probably stay here, organize the break rooms, and send us over to discuss, we'll probably discuss University Square. Here comes Jeremy. So why don't we get Jeremy, why don't we do the executive session first?
Who do you want me to have as co-hosts? I can't do it because I can't bring you back in because I won't know when you're ending.
Oh, I see. All right. Why don't, you can make me the co-host. That's fine. And then I will send us on to executive session.
I have to go in fifteen minutes.
This should be fairly short, so.
I made you co-host.
Okay. I am the co-host, and yet I don't seem to have the.
Need to be host, maybe?
Yeah, let's try making me the host.
And then you'll just have to bring it back.
Ah, there it is. Okay. Breakout rooms. All right. So, um, let's see.
Now I need you to end the recording too, since you're a host.
Oh, right. All right. I will pause the recording. So I will pause and then give me one moment, and I will appropriate people to, to the breakout room. We should have an invitation.
You're muted.
We're all muted. There we go.
All right, all right. So we're back and we are recording. And is there a motion to return to regular session?
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Blankfield, a second by Mrs. Pardee to return to regular session. Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Blankfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Beery?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Mrs. Rex?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
They're muted, Phil. I think I saw them. An affirmative eye there.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Google?
Aye.
All right, we are back on regular session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Phil moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Erdel, second by Mrs. Pardee. There's no discussion. Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Blankfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Beery?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Wise? Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Google?
Hi.
We're adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Night, everybody.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome. Have a good night.